I want to remind everyone that this is a regularly scheduled meeting, that the date, time, and place of the meeting has been given to the local news media, members of the governing body. It was posted on our website and also the State Public Meetings website. So, to begin, we'll take roll call. And then Councilman Burdick has offered to give our prayer. And then if you would follow me in the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Labrum?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
Councilman Baird?
Here.
Councilman Wade?
Here.
And Councilman Burdick?
Here.
Great.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are so thankful that we can meet here as a community and be able to discuss the issues of our city. We are so thankful to be given this area in which we dwell for all of the things that we have and all of the fortunes that thou gives us in our city and the help and the challenges that we have. We ask thee to please bless those that put their lives on the line and put themselves in danger for us as residents. Watch over them, watch over our residents themselves. Bless that the leaders can see clearly the true needs of the city and of the people and be able to make the right decisions in all matters. We ask thee that we can all travel home safely at the end of this meeting and ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a side note, yeah, if you haven't signed, the rolls phone around. If you'd make sure you sign that, that would help us with our minutes of our meetings. Speaking of minutes, we'd like to go ahead and get those ready for approval. Are there any changes or amendments at page one and page two? Page three? Page four? And five? Page six? Well, we have a lot of pages. Are there any amendments or corrections? Has anybody noticed any that need to be changed or amended?
We approve them.
Motion by Councilman Labor to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman White. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We do have our comment period at the beginning of our many meetings. If there's anybody in the public that would like to take opportunity, if you'd please come and state your name for the record and at the podium, and then we'll give you up to three minutes. Steve, did you say?
Steve Semethi. Couple of months ago, we had two people come before planning and zoning for conditional use permits for metal buildings. At that time, I was a little uneasy about it, but figured that there must have been a change to the order and slipped in when the council approved the first half of the Chapter 17 updates without following state law and started that process through planning and zoning. This month, we have another conditional use on the planning and zoning agenda for a metal building. That's why they didn't dig them. Conditional uses were not updated in the prior Chapter 17 update. They're later in the chapters. I went through the minutes of all the council meetings since that update, and there wasn't a resolution or an ordinance change concerning conditional uses either. On August 7th, there was a discussion on the Greyhawk Loop matter. Three recommendations were made, none of which included creating a conditional use for metal buildings. The motion made was that council would support staff proceeding with the process as already begun, whatever that process may be. Current city code 17.17.030 states that accessory buildings are permitted uses in residential zone. City staff has arbitrarily created a rule that so-called metal buildings must have a conditional use. This is purely bureaucratic overreach and a waste of time and money for the residents of Roosevelt City. It takes about two months to go through the process for a conditional use. Also, planning and zoning changed their meetings from the fourth Wednesday of every month to the third Wednesday to help speed up the process for the citizens. But now, instead of the council meeting twice a month as they have for decades, they only meet on the third Tuesday, which now delays the process even more. It is costing residents $200 for a conditional use permit that they shouldn't need. I emailed the city attorney asking about requiring a conditional use permit for metal buildings. I also asked if there was a definition of what is considered to be a metal building. The answers I received did not make a case at all for the city requiring a conditional use permit for a metal building. In fact, they further showed that the city staff is erroneously applying city code to justify the overreach. He referenced 17.08.060 having language addressing protection of adjacent property. This section of code only applies to conditional uses, not permitted uses. According to state code, conditional uses are permitted uses that can have conditions placed upon them. Those conditions must be based on standards set forth within the applicable ordinance. Roosevelt City code does not have any ordinances pertaining to the aesthetics of a building, nor should it. Aesthetics of buildings should be handled by developers and landowners using CCNRs and/or HOA bylaws. Based on current code, there are no conditions that can legally be applied to these conditional uses. Creating this arbitrary rule that metal buildings must have a conditional use permit was a knee-jerk reaction to public clamor when a resident legally built a building following the existing rules and the neighbors were unhappy about it. This public clamor could have been avoided if CCNRs were in place. I feel Roosevelt City staff should stop creating rules and regulations without going through the proper state mandated channels. I also feel Roosevelt City should refund the conditional use permit fees to those residents that have been required to get a conditional use permit when current ordinance does not require one.
Can we get a copy of that? Because there's a lot of information there.
Yep.
And would you mind getting that to Carolyn? And that way, we could look over that on our time. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Are there any others here that would like to address the council? Take up to three minutes to address the council. Seeing none, we'll move forward with our meeting. Thank you. We have a few public hearings, and John is so excited to talk to us about the budget again. He gets really giddy talking numbers. So, we'll go ahead and have him present, and then we'll open it up for public discussion. So, this is, we're talking about the 2019 budget reopen first, right? So, we'll do that one.
Okay. 2019 budget reopen first. All right, since our last meeting, and I have this up there too. There's just a few changes. Put it in a summary form. End up with the last pieces that were affected. We just used the larger side of paper. All right. So, I can go over the addendum first in brief if that works, and then it's going to start on the other. As far as the reopen.
Just one second. Do we have a copy of this that can be displayed?
Sorry. Okay. So, it remains as presented before, but with some additional addendum items that I wanted to go through and discuss. 2019 reopen budget item. The first item is transferring an additional $1 million from the general fund to the capital projects fund to stay in compliance with general fund restrictions. They require a less than 25% restriction on how much you can maintain on the fund balance, and this is simply just to make sure we're in compliance with that. And that will take place through a capital projects fund transfer anyways. Water fund, an additional increase to culinary and secondary water maintenance by an additional 20K. It's kind of a rough one here. We've had a few things we needed to fix and improve that way, too. So, also, we reclass from water capital projects to the water operations fund. It's simply a reclass from the capital projects fund to the water operations fund because master plans are considered more of an operational expense versus capitalized. So, that's the same thing on the sewer fund, just then the same amount of 18.1K for that. So, any page after that is basically anything that would have been affected by those changes. So, for example, on page A2, you'll notice down about three-fourths of the way down on the right side, you'll see an original to revise difference of about 1.4 mil. That just raised by a million that is transferred to the capital projects fund. So, and so on. So, any other questions there? It's simply to reflect any adjustments that were indicated in the budget in brief. So, any questions there? Now, on the reopen side, how much do you want me to repeat from what I did last time?
Just give us the highlights.
Okay.
Any major changes or things like that? It would be.
As far as the sales tax, we consider it to be relatively close to what was originally budgeted. It's actually 35K, which as far as sales taxes is concerned is pretty close. Interest, we anticipate 120K more in interest because of the great interest rates that we've been blessed with. On the expense side, we had to increase that a little bit by 30K due to a 2018 road fund that we have incurred this last year. Let's see. Also, on the, on the capital projects fund itself, the 2018 road improvement grant that we got of 1.2 mil, we didn't know that we were going to get that back from the originally budgeted, so some of these reopen items are simply to make sure we're accounting for those. Down a little further, I think that's, most of the things that we're seeing on the reopen are simply things that are basically just about impossible to predict, and we make sure that we're accounting for that. Additional depreciation due to other projects we have to close out also comes into play. Next page, page four, and I think that's, I'm just touching some of the highlights that the mayor requested. On the sewer fund itself, about the same, some contributions, right-of-way revenue for 43K, some additional there, and obviously the 18.1K of master plan transferring there, too, discussed on the addendum. Not a lot there other than the addendum items that are touched on, so any questions there?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and consider ourselves in a public hearing and would allow public comment. If there are any that would like to comment, again, if you just come and state your name for the record. Roy, you sure you don't want to comment on that? Just kidding.
I was looking for Roy and Ray.
Ray, Ray. That's twice I got her wrong. Seeing none, we'll consider ourselves back in regular session and would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Wade to approve.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Labrum. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, John is the tentative, 2019 budget or 2000?
Twenty.
Twenty, final budget.
Okay, can you go through that?
Yes, please.
Just reading down through some of these. Touch on highlights or kind of go through the whole thing?
Not the same. We've had a public hearing on this once before. Just let us know anything that may have changed.
Okay. Perfect.
And just so everybody's aware, these are available. We can advance to our meetings so that you can access these on the Utah Public Notice website, so the packet's available.
Sounds good. As far as 2020 preliminary, there's been a graph in your previous packet that talked about, or that basically indicated the trend line of sales tax. We believe that the budget assumptions listed here reflect those type of trends. We expect revenues in applicable funds to increase by 1%, expenses 1%, health insurance costs by around 7% overall. We expect property auto insurance to increase, although we have seen an improvement, and any improvement we see, we expect to transfer to capital projects fund anyways, so, which will improve in streets and whatnot here. So, the next one, initiating a 2.5% increase on COLA appointed employees, which we believe to be in line with like organizations and the Western Regional CPI of 2.4. And the 1% increase in market rate adjustments, that is just due to, you know, in the event that we see an employee that's making their actual rate and comparing it against the market rate, this 1% is just in there to help make sure that we don't have that chasm between the market and actual. As far as other listed wages, they should be listed there. Some of the other highlights here, sales tax inclined by 5%. Been pretty fortunate. We believe that some of that growth is due to more businesses. We know that the oil field is relatively flat at times, but some of that new growth business is helping that. Some of the other added 6.9 police strike force budget up to 14.5, increased police budget by 3%, maintaining similar levels in the park maintenance budget to include dirt rehab of Field 5, increased recreation budget by over 5% from revised to 2020. Once again, that's based on some of the feedback we've been getting from council and other feedback there. So, a general fund debt, I can read that, but I think that's pretty self-explanatory where we're at as far as that is concerned. Next page here. You can see some of the listed projects. If you have any questions there on any of those projects? Water fund, relatively flat, not a lot of difference in revenue as far as water is concerned. It's only affected by rate and quantity and some other effects. Some additional costs on the water fund, there's an additional 200K in the sand wash secondary water cost due to some water costs we take back into the city again. An added 25.5 of culinary budget for Johnson Water royalties, and we'll stick with the same on Victory Water, 350K, which seems to follow suit with the trend. Any questions on the capital projects and water fund?
No, 350K is after we've been relieved of the 280K that we applied before, correct?
I believe it used to be about 450, 450 before that.
Same to see 100,000 on that.
Right. As far as sewer fund, slight climb in revenue. This is based on revised versus current. Overall, operational expenses, some room, some room to grow there, but matched to, we try to match to the net of connection costs, so we, connection fees that we receive in. Sewer fund, capital projects. Any questions there? Okay, I can fill the excitement. Other than that, that's touching upon some of the highlights. I tried to put all the highlighted items in the budget in brief, so.
Any questions from the council for John?
I haven't already asked.
Thank you, John. Appreciate all you do.
Appreciate it.
We'll go ahead and consider ourselves in a public hearing and would accept comment for the public at this time, if there are any. Seeing none, well, oh, yes.
I need someone. Rebecca Pittman? Is there something else I was supposed to say?
No.
Okay. So, on the elected and appointed wage rates, why is the city recorder's wage not going up at 2.5 or 2.5 increase for COLA?
He has a contract to retirement, after retirement, and that modified to first of the year. So, there was some modification.
To that are you. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll consider ourselves back in regular session and would entertain a motion.
To approve?
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And motion was made by Councilman White. Councilman White, sorry. And second by Councilman Burdick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the ordinance 2019-429. We saw this last meeting. It had to do with animals and residential properties. There was some feedback from the council and public about having, allowing certain animals in the R16 zones and some of that smaller zones, maybe not the multi-use zones. So, Ryan, you want to take that and just kind of show us the changes that have been made?
So, the change here, we've had a distilling soil, raising crop in horticulture and gardening. We've added, based on that feedback, basically this line there, raising up to two sheep or goats, maximum of nine months. I think that was kind of a forage and that kind of age room so that they could raise them through the summer. And then up to six female chickens. So, we were still exempting roosters, but allowing some chickens and up to six rabbits. And this would be in the R16 and R110 zones, they could do that. In the multi-use zones, the M13, M18, it doesn't allow animals, those animals in there. It still allows household animals that have in there inside, but these are outside animals because that shared space that can have there, but it just adds to this one. So, we hope that that matched what we, the feedback we've gotten from the council last week. So, that is the change.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into a public hearing on this ordinance and would entertain any comments from the public. I just have one question. Did the planning and zoning happen, did they get to see this and see the changes on this?
I don't know if it's all the changes, but.
You had moved to approve.
They approved, we approved the prior, and the way it works is you guys can add any changes at that point.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to go back to anything.
Sounds good. Are there any other, I had the question, are there any comments for the public? Seeing none, would consider ourselves back in regular session and would entertain a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Oh, I, thanks for approving. And we have a motion to approve by Councilman Baird.
Second.
And a second by Councilman White. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're through the public hearings on to the appointments. We have Doug with us today from TAP, and we'll give it time to you.
Thank you. My name is Doug Polsom. I'm the loss prevention manager for the Utah Local Governments Trust. If you're familiar with or aware who the trust is, we are your insurance carrier. We provide insurance services for local governments all over the state of Utah. We have about 550 local government entities that are members of the trust. And in loss prevention, our job is to work with the members to try and prevent those unwanted events from happening, largely safety focused, but we also look at liability as well. The trust accountability program is something that we started about six years ago to help our members implement best practices, but it's a pretty challenging program. There's quite a few requirements that are designed to have a real impact on our losses and prevent unwanted losses from occurring. And so, out of our 500-plus members, we only have about 20% that actually receive the TAP award because it is kind of a difficult thing. Roosevelt City has received the TAP award five years running. Okay, so this is the fifth consecutive year, and this is for year 2018. Things that have been implemented include driver management programs, workers' compensation, claims management to help reduce the cost of work comp claims. Some of the big areas that are really important are the safety committee and incident reviews. I was noticing, I was looking at your mission statements up here, and under guiding principle one, reliability, it says that we actively learn from the past, perform in the present, and plan for the future. And that's exactly the kind of idea that TAP is all about, is making sure that we learn when something bad happens, how to prevent that from happening again in the future. So, I'd really like to express our appreciation at the trust for Roosevelt City, specifically for staff members, Ryan's leadership, as well as John and others that participated in the safety committee. In fact, every employee has things that they do that are related to the TAP program and our efforts to have a safe work environment. In addition to that, though, I also want to make sure that we recognize the council because if you didn't provide the support to your staff and your employees for them to be able to have safe work environments and good safety programs, then it would be very difficult for them to do these things. And so, we really appreciate your support as well. And so, I'd like to present you with your 2018 TAP award. This comes in conjunction with a cash award that was received earlier in the year for about $7,500, and you also get additional discounting, about 4.5% current extra discount on your workers' compensation premiums because the city has implemented these best practices and over a period of time. That discounting is something that is cumulative and has been earned over these years of consecutive review of these programs. So, very thankful to all of you and appreciative of your efforts, and again, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, yeah, I think you need to picture with our city manager and our assistant manager.
If not, we'll just stand in front of you so you're in the picture anyway.
Just so you know, you might be able to rattle this off the top of your head. So, 4.5% of a premium for workers' comp. What is that?
I should have looked it up before.
I didn't mean to put you in trouble.
I ran a little rattle of the budget, so.
All right, stand a little bit closer together. Okay, we're going to take two and roll and count you down for all. Ready, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are a common place for this. We're at home for that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Doug, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, staff, for all you do in keeping us safe, and I know what it's like keeping those workers' comp premiums down. And it's, it's, it means that there are policies and practices in place that make the workplace safe, and, and we appreciate your hard work in that.
That's pretty significant.
Yeah.
It is.
Five years running, so.
Well done.
Next, we'll, we have the library location discussion. We do have Daniel with us and Commissioner Todd. If you want to come up, so, just to give a little background on this, so there's been a lot of discussion on where to put the Duchene County Library, and they, they would like to put it near or in Roosevelt City and near the location that they've had. And so as many ideas have been floating around on where to put this, we're trying to help them get to a point where we can nail down a location and, and actually get moving forward. And so I visited with Daniel and, and Commissioner Todd on some ideas that I had. I think Councilman Laberman has talked to him a little bit, and obviously our city managers talked to him, so they're here to, to discuss some of those locations and see what the viability would be of, of getting one nailed down and getting going. Is that fair?
Yeah. Good to see you, gentlemen. I do want to just take a moment. Vice Chair Sharon Lott from the board is with us as well, and our Secretary, Lariann Hoggard, and so.
Welcome.
They are our one reporter as well, that has been working on this as well. So in the months since I last presented with you, we've, we've thought a lot about really trying to preserve the idea of that, of that new design, that preliminary new design, because it was so favored by, by the public. And we've looked not only at this place, but a couple other places, and we have various ideas on the table, but the, after we have the discussion, I went back to the architects and, you know, said, well, should we not have designed this? And I says, Dan, we can, you can keep paying us to make designs that aren't actually gonna, you're not actually gonna use. You really just need to figure out the location, then we can give you solid ideas. But they did say, we can tell you that the acreage footprint of the new build is around one point eight. That's including all the parking for that building, you know? But obviously, there is some parking already available in this area that we can kind of body off, and so maybe not that much. But as a reminder, the new build's looking around fifteen thousand square feet, and so.
Just, just for some perspective, what's the existing, what's the size of the existing one?
Yeah, four thousand, four thousand four hundred. Four thousand.
Now, Commissioner Todd, you had, I saw a little, well, it was basically Google Earth, and you had like the perimeter on that.
Let me just say, in my years in the oil field, I went all over the United States. And the first place I'd go to was the hotel. Second place I'd go to was the library. And the reason was, because I could tell what kind of community it was when I saw the library, whether it was Yakima, Washington, or, or in Arizona, or in Bicknell, Utah, or DelCon, Nevada, or anywhere, and back east. That tells that, for me, that told me what type of community it was. Now, in your situation, in your Roosevelt City, for Duchene County, and you know the history of it, that building that is now Duchene County was Roosevelt City, but because of the law, state law changed, it all flipped around and we took it over. So we're wanting to get a spot, so we can say we're part of Roosevelt City, but we're also Duchene County, the library system. So we're just trying to do our best. I've been here for five years, almost five. I started on this five years ago. I don't want to be on it when I leave.
Well, we, we don't want to be. I've only been here eighteen months, so I haven't been here the whole five years.
Let's, let's figure something out, let's just.
Sure.
C I B knows about this. They came and did a tour with, with us, the state C I B, the chairman, and they go out specifically to look something. We were told that the C I B will not fund the library. I heard that from Dave, and the C I board, people were, president said, are you kidding? That's a significant part of the C I B. So whether it's a loan or a grant, they were not interested. We were told that Vernal couldn't have a, they couldn't be funded because they were libraries, so they made themselves a resource center, which is totally wrong, so. So just as a background, that's where we wanted to look at.
And to, and to give a little more, I know C I B would be approve, approving of this, but how much money is actually saved currently for the library that's ready? Or do you want to say?
All of us, all of us pay into the library.
Yeah.
We have some.
Right. It's a, it's a significant chunk, in, in meaning that this is a very, I mean, as, as soon as a location is decided, it can move very quickly.
It's on our one year with the C I B. They know it, they're expecting it. They will, I don't know if we'll get a loan, a grant, but we'll get, we know we'll be preferred if there's a loan, because we are contributing part of the C I B.
So, a question that I'd have really quickly, and then I'll let you give, because Daniel, you were mentioning, I know that you've been showing different locations, and what, what's your feeling, what's your, what's your preferred location? And let's see if we can make that work.
I think, I think there's no debate that this is city central, right? I mean, this is the center of the residences and the center of community life in a lot of ways. And we, we did look at locations around that area, and it's already built out, right? We gotta take up something if we do that. It got harder, because any other locations we're looking at put us out on a ring around it, and I don't know.
And we want to say, Ryan's been real helpful.
Yeah.
Hard to help us.
Just to kind of give you an idea, I drew on there, that's why I drew, drew, to give you what fifteen thousand square feet looks like on the map. That's why that white box.
Okay.
Kind of give a picture to the public of what that kind of space looks like. And that's just the size of the, the actual foundation building size, not parking or anything else, I just kind of give you.
Can you put an acre? You said an acre? It's about acre and a half that's needed.
They said almost two acres.
That's including parking, and obviously, that's not an acre for the building property.
Yeah. So, some of the discussion that I've had, and because, well, okay, so we've looked at this property, and then if I misspeak, let me know, but, so, thought about putting it right where it is, to the right of the swimming pool. There's a couple of things there. First of all, parking is an issue. There would be no expense, no room for parking unless we started to tear other buildings down. The other thing is there's a water line. Can you kind of show where that?
Sewer line goes right down the side here.
Right.
It kind of goes down in between, there's a manhole道 right here, that's just on, so if you go much to the, to the east of the current building, that, that will run into that sewer line that goes down here, and it's all the way down into it. So, so it cuts the, cuts that side. We expand much, either expanding this out, but going north, you know, and this is where the current parking lot is, that's, I have a better map, but I'm too worried it's easy to draw pictures, so that was helpful, that's why I picked that one, but, but that is where it is, just kind of right along.
If I'm wrong, on the north side, but there is there a line going across, or at least there are, the water lines are also cutting across perpentitude to them?
Yeah, there's water lines in the, in the top, but I think most of that's.
So mainly the sewer line that's.
Ebe offset from those, but it's, but there are water wells. We have some old city water wells that are, are located in this area, so those, so if you're building on top of the old water well, probably not the best.
And we know.
There are water wells in this side.
And our discussions, people, I mean, honestly, we understand that the pavilion shouldn't be cut off from the playground, and that's not a good idea.
We had two big public meetings several months ago, and that was their, their concern was if it was in that particular world, it would have problems.
One of the things to put into, into perspective, or, you know, at least relative to, to size and things like that, is where the, the construction's going on, on that map.
Is the new.
Is the new pool, but the, the aquatic center doesn't go that far west. So one of the thoughts that we had talked about is if we, if we could possibly put the library on the west side, it would take out those two ball fields, but we had talked and, and thought, well, if there was some compensation that could possibly happen there to where we could construct new full-size ball fields, then it would, it would help. One, I, I've talked to several of the baseball and softball community, and they think it's a great idea. I don't know what the cost, well, we kind of, we have an idea of what the cost would be. We don't know exactly what the compensation would be, but we looked at that and thought that might be the slickest, quickest, and best way to, to get it where it's, close to where it's at, and then it would solve some other, some other.
I just want to bring up.
Recreational things.
This is a construction site.
Yeah.
We'll have a construction site.
Yeah.
It isn't like we drop it, and they're.
Right.
So that's, that's a factor that we all have to think about. It'll be, you know, it'll be a year.
Yeah.
Where are the other locations that you've looked at?
We've only discussed that closed.
Or, or, you know, that's kind of a hard one, because any people's speculation. Okay. Yeah.
But there are other locations that are being looked at.
We've looked in U N County. I mean, I'm using that as an example. We've looked everywhere from the border to down off the hill.
Yeah.
We actually just found one today, that we, that's close to this, but.
Ryan, you, you are somewhat affiliated with the baseball community, softball community.
Soccer.
And soccer and those things. What, what do you think, what would their, well, and I've talked to some others, I don't know that, I may have had that conversation with you too, but what is your feeling from them? I mean.
Because the fields have already been reused, I think it's a good idea that you use that space, and if you were able to build two new full-size fields.
Well, that'd be great, you know, in respect to representing the whole county.
Yeah.
Those are two little baseball fields.
Sure.
And to build two and compensate for two, for two small ones.
Yeah, and we, and we, and we reduced that when we built the pool, and that was a decision that we made. And so, you know, therein lies that, some of that responsibility, I guess, if we were to do that, but the, they do function to a degree for the, you know, the smaller kids and those types of things, and. Yeah, two, well, two age groups is what they told me, so two age groups can play on those, and then after that, they're, they're pretty much useless for the older.
Yeah, they don't want the baseballs on the pool.
Yeah.
They've all been softball this year, to my knowledge.
Softball is one place down there.
If you were to go that route, where would the new build be?
I got with our city manager and, and the engineers over the master planning.
The master plan, we're trying to identify where, where future things can go, and that's, that's something to try to identify. They're looking at those options, but.
A suggestion that I had made and visited with them about would be where the, in, in the walking park, in the perimeter of the walking park. So if you were to put, if you were to draw those fields in there, they would fit almost perfectly within the walking park area, and it's big enough, so if you were to take and want to put two more fields in the future there, you could actually put four, like it'd be just like a pie cut in four, like I've seen a lot, and it's flat there, but that would be, there's sufficient room to be able to put those fields, up to four of them right there, that would be.
So kind of what we already have, just.
Duplicated.
Yeah.
Sounds like, but how about the parking, what did you thought there, ma'am?
So the parking, if you.
I mean, the parking was where you were talking about putting the new parks.
Yeah, so if you, if you, where the skate park is at, just to the, just to the east of the skate park, if you extended that parking lot there in that area, and then you would have to walk a short distance, but it's really not any further to walk from there to the fields than it would be to walk from the south parking lot to the north field, so you're kind of right there in the center. So you could add additional parking there, and that's pretty flat, and it's pretty flat up top of there. You can see where the, kind of the ridge begins to the south, and, but you'd still have as large of an area to put parking there as you potentially would have to the west.
The city owns that property?
They don't own that property. We would have to, we'd have to look at acquiring that property, so.
Well, I, I played baseball on the one field, the little league on the other field, so it's been a while. I could hit it a little more.
So those are some ideas. I know I talked to Councilman Laberman, and he had some ideas too, trying to go to the east against State Street, which, I mean, we're, they're all up for, for consideration. I, I don't know, are there any thoughts on that?
I just, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I was just gonna say, that's, I mean, as far as basketball court, I'd, I'd really like to see that stage, just because it's the only place in Roosevelt that people can go play basketball, other than schoolhouses, but these are full courts here.
Yeah, you'd have to build a new one of those, yeah.
And every night I drive by and drop off the books there, especially once it's warm.
It's busy.
It's busy. It's busy all the time, I think. Joe, did you have comments?
Oh, I just, I, I kind of agree with your opinion that putting up where those softball fields are now, I think a new library would fit in there just wonderfully, if we could figure out how to get the, those fields replaced somewhere.
Sorry, but you know the pavilions here, that's natural to migrate over, you know, families get together and they go.
And we could keep that one there.
Yeah.
And so you'd still have a, a place to play there.
At least over the years that I've worked here, that's the least used. In fact, they never had anything there for years.
Yeah.
This one has been redone to standard size, so there is one there that's current, it's standard.
Infield standard size, basically.
It has a two hundred foot, the fence line is two hundred feet, and so it's standard.
There's a fence there?
It's the aquatic center, so.
Yeah, okay.
Centerfield fence, huh?
It is right there.
Full fence around, but it is, it's infill and outfield size. This one, these two are not.
So you might have to pay for a four, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, from a footprint perspective, can you put an acre and a half or something there, I mean, so we could see kind of what that looks like? And obviously, the construction site's not that large, but we have a pretty good idea where that fence line comes down.
The county owns the current lumber, is that what you're saying, or does the city community?
It's.
But the library system is under this.
I think the building might fall back to Roosevelt City.
And do we have plans at all there, thoughts?
You know, and this is a far out idea, one, one thought that I personally have had is you have the library, you know, in, I hate to compare us to Vernal, because we're our own entity, but if you go to other communities and you see certain things, they'll have buildings where there's history and those types of things, and, and close to the library, it might be of good use. I mean.
Could be.
A, a, a history center, you know? I don't know of any place in Roosevelt where you can go and, and see our history. I, if you, if you go to Vernal, you can see they have displays of things, and it's pretty neat to go and, and look at those, and I think that would work well, close to a, a library, is to have a history center as well and have some of our history.
I agree. I think that's a great idea.
It's an acre and a half?
Almost. There's an acre and a half, not perfect, but that's, that's the size of an acre and a half.
So go to the, like, narrow it up and go towards Lagoon Street, let's see.
No, that's, that's with, like, that's a big footprint.
Yeah.
And there is parking on the outside all the way around, so that's a factor that would be.
Now, when.
How much, how much parking is needed for the library? I mean, is it fifty stalls, is it?
That feasibility study quoted thirty slots.
Thirty slots?
But I would say that, you know, a regular day, twenty is probably what we try to cap out for a normal day, right? Which is why.
Some big fans when you get that.
What's that? Yeah, but, you know, if we have, if we have a smaller parking lot, and if we can still body up on, you know, that adds parking to the block altogether, I mean, we can park in places with big things.
Here's a question for you. How many? Here's a question for you. How many slots do we have at the swimming pool right now?
That's a look, but we, based on occupancy, I think it was similar to 30, like 35.
Cause I'm thinking if it's the size of.
Built to size, you'll footprint.
Yeah, then, then I think it would be adequate. And I would like to, yeah, go ahead.
The, the acre and a half, the 1.8 acres includes.
Parking and everything.
So if you have parking elsewhere, you might be able to reduce the.
Yeah, we're, that's what we anticipate.
That's big.
Yeah, one, and one of the things I'm thinking is if there's a parking lot for the, the library, that could also be used especially in the later hours when people are swimming. I mean, it'll, it'll help with some of the congestion we have in that area anyway.
The one thing we wanted to do was be partners and work together.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, and that's why we, we felt like this was our spot because of being central. And I understand the baseball world, I, I lived it for money and had my kids live it too. I think there's got to be something for them to, and I understand that. I do want to say that we need places to, to have construction. That's a factor that we all have to remember, that it's just not gonna be.
Here's the, is it, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is that, do you have a concern with that where this is all developed and then we create a construction zone and it becomes a construction zone, obviously, for a year or two?
To do a construction where, you know, this area, we were, some of here, that would be pretty tough for you. You know, we already have parking here.
Do you see a problem on the west end much for that, or?
I think you could almost, because I imagine, you know, the building kind of goes on one of the fields mostly, right? The other one's mostly for the parking lot. I think you could stage the construction on the parking lot side, whatever that'll be, and then we can work on the building. Of course, I'll, before you guys all don't know more about it than I do.
It sounds logical.
It seems like you would, you'd have the construction set up where the block will be, work on the building and then work on the lot.
Well, one of my concerns would be this is, I think there's two, two minor concerns with it, in, in my opinion. And that is if we did build there, is there a way that, is there a way we could get some ball fields? How soon could we have built, ball fields built so that we're not?
You're building before we build.
Right, and, and that would be one of them. And then the second one, if we do do this, and I'm not saying. Yeah, so, and the second thing is, you know, what type of compensation would that look like? What would Roosevelt City then end up having to pay extra to get those done?
What's the gap cost?
Yeah, that was the gap cost. That's a good way to put it. So, talking with, I went and I visited with Ben Allred because he had done several for the tribe. And so he had a, and he had recently done them, so he had a pretty good idea of what those costs would be. And I think I, yeah, on the ball fields. And so he, he had mentioned probably 110 to 150,000 per field, depending on how, how elaborate we went. Yeah, and, and I talked to him a little bit about up there and, and he went and looked and, at, at where they could possibly go. And, and that's what he based his deal on. And so we'd have to look at that and say, it's gonna be anywhere from 220 to 300,000 possibly to, to reconstruct some ball fields. What could we get compensated for the existing ones? And then what's the difference? And make sure that that, everybody would be comfortable with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. The other consideration that should be talked about on this side is the traffic congestion in that road to the west. It is a small road. It's not a cluster. You'll notice that the ones to the north and, and to the south are fair, are quite a bit larger and wider than that one. And the, the question comes, if you're parking or entering from that side, it's gonna be extremely congested. At this point, whenever there's activities going on at ball field, it becomes a one-way road.
Yeah.
And so it's probably, it's probably one lane.
I wonder if that's a way.
They park, they don't park parallel, they park.
They park angled, but here, here's a thought with that too. So if you're looking for. Yeah, and if you're looking for easy and fairly cheap parking, if you were to take that road and push that in a little bit and just pave, I don't know how many feet, but you could get those, you could have, I mean, that would be a lot of parking for the library along that road, fairly inexpensively. And, and then it would solve, I think, the problem that you've mentioned.
I, I think if you widened it, and we have a standard, I have a little bit, 10, 12 feet, whatever that standard is, we have to find out. But I think that it will flow traffic because you'll, you'll be drawing traffic from both.
I don't know, it's just a thought.
Lagoon Street is a, is a traffic, you widen it already. If, if you're accessing and having it inside, that's.
I don't want that, yeah.
Unless, unless you access, you have your parking on this side and.
Correct.
Unless you have your living from Lagoon Street like you do now.
Yeah.
And that's part of the architect's world to try to maneuver and do it right. And if we, we can put no parking signs on that one side, you're just parallel. Parallel would work. It's, it's just a situation we're trying to, to work with.
I think it's critical wherever the entry is too, that we're from, you know, that it would be facing south, just like the aquatic center and everything is that that would be. So then you could work from that point.
I just want to point out that the librarian of the year is from Roosevelt, was the Roosevelt librarian. The new chair, or the new president of Utah State Library is this guy, as of two weeks ago. So, I mean, we're. We need to upgrade our facilities to.
Do we, can we make a motion on this at all, um, something to move?
I think so. If, in my opinion, we'd almost need to have a motion to make sure that that's the spot. And it might be contingent on being able to, to fill, to come up with that gap. But I would say if we had a motion to.
Talking.
To allow.
Finances and.
Yeah, and just.
And to be fair with the baseball.
Exactly.
That's right, we have.
This, this is the preferred spots, what we're hearing, that you've looked at.
Well, is this, is, is it the city's preferred spot?
That's, that's, that's the great question. That is what, it would be my.
It would be my preferred spot as well.
The only issue really was just having to move the field somewhere else for, for sports. Other than that, I think it would be already moving along.
Just sticking my foot in my mouth. I think, because I don't want to name my publication per se, but the other ones are almost playing with commercial property. They're probably better served by commerciality moving in there or taking out something that could be used for other recreation, things like that. It, it moves us away from city center and takes up something that would probably be more ideal with a different venue sitting here.
Two, two quick questions. Yes, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, once again, goes back, my philosophy, I see where the library is and that tells me where the city's perspective is.
That's right.
Personally, and I feel like there's a couple of things that I'd like to, to point out as well. In our master plan, and as we've looked at downtown and trying to create areas of foot traffic for downtown and businesses and those types of things, it fits well in my mind with that, with, with drawing people to, yeah, to the, to the downtown area. We have the aquatic center, we have libraries. I know there's talk of other things that could possibly go near there and it would create a, a draw for people to come down. And the second thing is if we did move the ball fields up to Constitution, I think there's some efficiencies we gain there by having the, the maintenance facility and those types of things close by. You know, I don't know.
And, and for parents.
And for parents, yeah.
Their community product, you'd have a certain location.
And the, the other one is All Stars and hosting tournaments and those types of things. It would be better to set up to do those types of things, I feel.
The library would bring a community space that could hold, you know, 150 people to that area.
Yeah.
As well, which is kind of like, we don't want to shrink the parking too badly because we are gonna have, I mean, the library right now has no community room space. It's going to have that.
Which will be a big part of the.
Yeah, we had 90,000 visits last year between Duchesne and Roosevelt, so 60,000.
That's amazing.
60,000.
That's a bit, and we, we need that.
And that's not including, because a lot of the events have been held outside of Roosevelt Library. It's usually we have to round up a shroud of building pretty regularly for our events.
Be great.
Well. I think unless there's any much, I, I think the consensus is to move forward that far. I would like to, I would entertain a motion for that. I, I think it would, just to be on the cautious side, to be contingent on agreeing upon the gap, the, you know.
It's a move, a move ahead motion, that's all.
Yeah, I would say, if I were to word a motion, I would say that the motion would be to approve Duchesne County Library to proceed with that spot, go to C I B, contingent on the, the dollar amount, the dollar figure, and just agree, the agreement on the dollar figure. And I think that would be fairly.
You know, we can't do the C I B until we get a score, for example.
I would make that motion. I, we gotta move ahead on it. Onto the west end of the block, like we've looked here. I mean, just that we're moving ahead to do it and, and that we report next month on, if the movement, if we could.
Hold on a second.
I mean, it's a pretty wide open motion, but it's just a move.
Maybe I just speak to the motion, just that maybe it's motion to move forward with the feasibility study and see if this is gonna work right here, you know, so that we all know where it's at. When we get to the spot, punch the numbers and the sizes and everything else.
Well, let's do, can we do this? Because I understand your urgency in trying to get this to the C I B.
Well, our urgency is, let's, let's have a conversation and then whatever happens, happens. But we really haven't had a conversation.
With the, if that's with the.
Yeah, with you.
Okay.
Do we have any, one more question? Water and sewer right there, that's not an issue.
I have to look at that.
Libraries aren't huge water users, I'm sure.
And what, what that spot is, you know, the.
Are they? So libraries aren't huge water users, are they?
So the motion is to move forward. It was made by Councilman Wade, uh, no, by Councilman Labrum, and second one by Councilman Wade. We'll be in negotiations, I guess, to get the financial end of it, paying terms quickly as possible and get that going, so.
And then there's one thing we can't do. We can kind of go, okay, let's open it up to the architects and we can get some information on that.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're just, until we get this done, we can't do anything else. We have a spot, we can make adjustments.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just want to say thank you for here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate your desire to benefit the community.
Being here.
Yeah, that's a huge investment that you're making in our area.
It's, it's over with you.
Like timelines, I mean, we're open. Who's, I think the mayor and the city manager should be very involved in this. Both falls under the others, but we should make sure we meet.
Well, it'll be a budget item, I think, with, you know, as it comes to some of those things, because we'll, we might need to reopen the 2020 budget already.
If you're counting, you don't have to worry about it.
Can you slide some, some of that million that you put into capital projects and the recreation, just, so. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. And hopefully that'll give you some clarity and, and help you move forward.
We just want to communicate and get things going.
Yeah.
And congratulations to you, Dan, for your accomplishments in your field, professional field.
And Alan.
But it was great. When we hired you, we thought, this is a good guy, he's a real good guy.
It's gonna be, it's really interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming over.
Ray.
Hi.
You are up, my friend. So Main Street revitalization design.
It's like an extension of your last discussion. We did this in 10, 15 minutes for correction. We have any more time than that. Especially if we're looking at you.
You know what? You've been patient with us and so take the time you need.
All right, so we embarked on trying to look at a, a study for how to improve Main Street and talked a little bit about it earlier, particularly introducing myself. My name is Ray Whitchurch. I'm the principal for I B I group on Housewives and landscape park effect and urban designer. So your discussion was really interesting to listen to and I appreciate your attempts and working on trying to activate your downtown because that was the whole goal of this study as we, we moved into it. So we came in and we looked and we said, looked at your downtown and your main street and that area. And we said, it's actually got really good bones, as we put it in planning industry. Like the structure, a lot of other towns we go to and they've messed up their downtown to the point where they're really salvageable. They've kind of ripped all the commercial and put them in other places and before you know it, it's all sprawled out. It's difficult to recover a really downtown core. But through our exercise in this project, we found that there's still a lot of identity that takes place in Roosevelt with your downtown Main Street area. People recognizes it as an asset and would like, would like to see it improved. I'll go to the next slide. Get past table content, but I think he said that's perfect. So the study area that we looked at specifically, next one. Study area we looked at specifically was Lagoon Street. It's a central core, up the first north and then first south and then right down Main Street. Those are the four key blocks. The suggestions we make in this study actually would extend, you could extend them along Main Street to revitalize it. People do get a sense of entering your downtown when they're, when they come here. They, then they, they leave, but they would like to see that identity reinforced. Next pair of pictures here. So we did a, we did a public survey and a summary of that and I already addressed this a little bit, but people, I think we had 360 respondents to the public survey. 67% of those people visit Main Street and 84% live or work in Roosevelt. So people are frequenting this area regularly and that tells you why the identity is so strong. I won't get into the statistical wonkiness. Lots of people that like numbers. I work with them all the time, but they're not my best friend. I can't draw pictures. Yeah, well, yeah, he's, he's really good at stick. Anyway, so the other, uh, they gave you a ranking of five to seven for the quality of your downtown on a scale of one to 10. Which showed you there's lots of hope for improvement. The good structures already are in place there, so it could go better. When we asked them, is it how well is Main Street really serving the community, that number dropped. So they're going there, but they're not really feeling like Main Street's serving the function that it needs to, to serve. Other issues that came up, just kind of side comments that came through. There were a lot of comments about wanting to give Main Street face with, reinforce the identity, which is really great for us and it's great for you because it's why you commissioned this study. So kind of reinforced that outcome. So we worked with it. Most people wanted to see more attractions downtown, like restaurants and things that would activate it, make them feel comfortable. So we came in with some strategies on how you can do that with a future vision. They wanted to keep the historic feel for your, for your downtown. That will guide some of the material uses that you, you place around this area and encourage people on how to rebuild or to build or to reinvest in that area. And I think later you'll talk about tools that we can use in order to, to move that forward. One great comment was this last quote right on, on the bottom of the general comments and I'll just read it through quickly. "I would love to see Main Street as destination, a place where people gather both in the day and at night. I'd love to see that old advertisements touched up and repainted on the brick buildings. I want to see more than empty storefronts, rundown buildings, dance studios, air salons, nothing. Uh, places where people actually want to be, like live theater or music, little cafes or something like that." So that's kind of a, it encapsulates kind of what we got from all of the comments we heard of those 360 people. Generally, there's a lot of support for your downtown Main Street. What can we do to make and improve that? Next, next slide. So from that, we, we created these general goals to go with it. And then one was, we've got to figure out a way to update the building process and make that so that it economically works for both the private sector and for the vision of the street. Support the existing businesses that are there and encourage new businesses in empty storefronts. These are kind of no brainers. Enhance the public realm. When we as urban designers talk about the public realm, we're essentially talking about the. the space between the buildings, including the street. So we don't wipe the street off, but. Enhance, enhance safety and comfort. That's always a big, a big issue. A lot of traffic running around down U S 40 there. And then establish an identity that you need to Roosevelt. And what is that? That's, that's a, that's a good question. That's something every town deals with, no matter how big or small. In fact, one of the most common comments we get from public meetings is, don't lose what we already are in, when you change the way we do things. So we recognize that as something that's sensitive and needs to be addressed. And improve parking, safety and quantity. So it's a little inconvenient, the parallel parking along the side sometimes is a, could be scary and heavy traffic situation. I heard you talking about congestion. I live in a different world of congestion. Some of my works in California, which is another world of congestion beyond, they don't measure miles anymore, they're completely on minutes and seconds, which is sad. So we move forward, next slide, to a framework plan that established what should happen here. And there's, so there's a central spine that runs along Lagoon Street and then Main Street. And the idea is to tie the public facilities on the west side to Cottonwood Creek that's on the, the opposite side. And that can be turned into an enhancement. I don't know where the Forest Service, where the Park Service is going to plan this. They're looking at enhancements to that trail and that area and corridor at the same time. We'd like to see that extended to a more civic, more finished area that Mike Mayeau is talking about it with the library, that's a great spine to be thinking about in conjunction with the high school and the Utah State University. So pretty soon you see Lagoon Street becoming the parallels or the perpendicular street to the, to the street you don't have a whole lot of control over, just influence on with U S 40, if you control Lagoon. So that gives you the ability to make Lagoon into something that's special and starts to draw people into the center of your town and starts to hopefully bleed over the edges and then you can get UDOT involved. They were really pretty supportive as we went through this study. We have some philosophical differences on street crossings, but I always have philosophical differences with UDOT. It just kind of comes with the, comes with a badge. So go to the next slide, please. So then we start looking at a design vision. This is the existing street section that you have on Main Street right now. Essentially has two parking lanes, one on each side and then two through lanes and then a center left turn movement lane. There aren't a lot of needs for left to turn movement on Main Street in this area. I don't see any driveways that really need to be penetrated through. Everyone comes through off of the, off of the street corners. So that, that's something to consider, that there is a little bit of room to play with on U S 40, then you have to play in the same sand rocks as you got. So that can be either a really rewarding experience or a challenging experience and I'll let you decide which one that is. So there's room to play with. Lagoon Street has actually tons of potential on it. Look at the diagonal parking, everyone that's hand raised.
Just a, just a question, Ray. So if I'm looking at that, it's a three lane capability, eight foot, 11 foot, and what's the next one over?
That's a 12 foot center lane.
12 foot center lane.
And that's essentially a turning lane.
Okay.
Essentially what we already have.
Yes, this is what you have. This is your existing condition.
Okay.
In that, in that block. And then the base between the buildings. So a good streetscape, you know, it's going to accommodate lots of pedestrians. It's kind of interesting, if you, for example, were to go to Park City, it breaks a lot of the streetscape rules, but they compensate, really compensated it with high amenity design because its sidewalks are like my feet. And, you know, they, they work around the edges and they actually pulled it off. But we did the streetscape design, so I am bragging.
Our street makes that, theirs makes ours look pretty wide. I mean, more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's, there's this really, really confined, but Lagoon has lots, lots of potential. I mean, there's room for sidewalk widenings. You've, you've got just a lot of room to work with on Lagoon. The other key feature that you find in good, good streetscapes is like corner crossings or pedestrian crossings. There's only one crossing signal in this hole, in that area, and that's on Lagoon Street. You know, UDOT did a little study, they sent us some information. They say it doesn't warrant another crossing, but this becomes a chicken or egg argument no one wants to cross because they don't feel safe, so everyone goes to the signal, which is probably a good thing, but if there were a hot signal, a pedestrian activated signal, you maybe you'd see more people cross.
We didn't have a pedestrian activated one, but we did further south have.
We had the yellow one.
A yellow one now, but it's, but it's, it's further south than probably the area that you're looking at.
And so, I mean, right now this street does what UDOT wants it to do, pretty much. And so they're always going to, always going to be what I call gravity towards staying here. But that doesn't, I mean, I think you could work with them through this process. One of the things we thought would be really valuable next, next sheet would be to look at curb extensions. You see in before, they're just where you bowl out the streets, so you close down the crossing zones for pedestrians. They don't feel like they're having to go as far to get across the street. So it's just, they're only crossing three lanes at that point. The parking's protected, so the parking feels safer for people to park on it. It serves a lot of functions.
We have these at, on Lagoon Street in front of the pool, that kind of area. And there is some, I went out today, there's this one that's actually just painted as a, as around it, not, not all the way out. But we have some of those things within, so it's not something would be a surprise to the community. We always look for that.
And what it signals to people coming down U S 40 is, is that this is also a pedestrian space. So you need to be mindful of that. And lots of times, that's all it takes to slow people down. And we accommodate wider and wider and broader and broader and before you know it, people think they're on the freeway. So this is a pretty effective tool for traffic calming. One thing that we do recognize, and we show you some suggested locations for these and of course, it's every corner. Because we, we think the pedestrian realm is just as important as the vehicular realm. And then it would be, you know, you'd look at maybe paving patterns, you could work with, there was a long discussion on this in the planning commission of what that should be for the crosswalks when you get to the point where you work through and where in the cross, crosswalks with UDOT. We don't expect that you're going to go out and spend a ton of money right on the, on the bullbouts of the street coming right out of the box. And so one of the things that, you know, I've learned in my travels around the country and doing these things is, is that people do pilot projects with curb extensions where they actually just come in and they put in inexpensive pollards and they paint out where the curb extensions are. In L A, I actually, actually went in and they sanded them with, with the asphalt so that they felt different as people crossed them. They were kind of bounded into them and they got used to them and they tested them and they could see whether they worked. So you don't spend the same kind of outlier right out of the box. You test them out first, see if they're effective and then you come in and if effective, you say, I'm going to fund those because it's going to pay for itself in the activation of what happens in our downtown. So this whole report is based on this kind of really practical approach to implementing something to change the character of the downtown. And that's just one tool you can use to do that. Also, we talk a lot about different zones along the sidewalk. There's essentially a building zone, a travel zone and a furniture zone. Right now you have a furniture zone and you've got the big planters in that, in that zone. We would recommend that that be enhanced and maybe there's places to sit. If this corner starts to really become activated and becomes a destination and you start seeing a lot of traffic moving, people traffic moving up and down Lagoon Street, say to your new library location potentially, or from the school and that this has become an active space, then you probably want some furniture in there for people to sit at and places for people to go outside and sit. And same thing would be with Lagoon Street. So when you start putting in implementation of like furniture and things, the thing that gets important is you want to make sure that that's consistent with the character of what you're trying to do with the vision of the, the street itself.
And I have a question on that too. So if, if I'm imagining myself walking down Main Street and, and wanting to sit or, you know, shade, those types of things, is there?
Include street trees.
Okay.
In the, in the furniture zone.
Okay.
But you can. We, we had, when we took it to the R B A, that was one of our responses, that business owners.
They're worried about their signs.
Yeah, they don't want them. So because of the signage and covering, that's areas.
So maybe we could put some of those, but closer to the Old Mill Park.
Yeah, we could do it on Lagoon Street and line it so that, the thought is, is we could line some of, on Lagoon Street and help draw that tie into Cottonwood Creek and, you know, have some ties there or ties towards the park so that, so that those trees draw you into that.
Area.
And that, that fear is, is traditionally based on an automobile kind of, you know, I've got to have to sign up there so the cars can see me and they can get in. And it's, and it's really scary for people to think about that. But other ways you can compensate for that as you get into this is you can look at, at vertical signs that come off the building. There's a section in this that shows how those can work to enhance visibility of the businesses. You can work with very strategic locations of where the trees go, whether you enhance it just on Lagoon Street, or you look at places where you can provide shade, maybe some of it comes off in the way of awnings for buildings and it, and it gets incorporated into signage elements. There's lots of ways to deal with shade factors and, and you can look at that. The other thing is you want to do is you want to kind of create this psychological barrier between traffic and pedestrian walking and that's what the furniture zone starts to do. It starts to say, it's okay to sit here because I, I definitely feel safe and then people are more willing to traverse back and forth along the street. And then we also like to think of furniture as part of the artwork. I mean, you've seen some, if you've been to Salt Lake, down on Second South and Main Street, you see some pretty elaborate benches that people are putting in and it is part of the art. So they don't have to be elaborate, they can be simple and they can be basic. And we have some examples of how those can work. Also, we thought of planters, the planters you have now are kind of stock planters. We thought of the opportunity you have to create like some identity by using the planters and here's some examples from Telluride to Aspen to kind of creating a new type of a planter that's consistent with some of your heritage. We, we picked this kind of funky looking thing because it's made of metal and welding and you've got a world-class welding facility in school here and, and you've got that in your, in your historical character of a key element. So maybe it's something you work with and you can create competitions or ways that that actually ends up being, but this was an idea we used, just to kind of use as a placeholder on how that works. And so next to that, you can see some renderings of adding some planters along there in the spaces that we're showing in the picture above and how that starts to change the dynamic of how the street feels. Next slide. These are some ideas for some benches. It's a, they can be, they can be really hard stone solid slabs that are cut. Those can be pretty expensive or they can be pretty less, they can be less expensive if you go along the sense of, you can see this one that's essentially gabion baskets with, with planking on top. It's pretty inexpensive. Or you can use like, not railroad ties because you wouldn't want to come out with creosote, but heavy, heavy timber or just simple triangular shaped things, anything that kind of add character and kind of consistent with where you want to go with this Main Street. And then this is examples of, of how those would look if you added all those elements into it. Lighting, we thought, we looked at the existing lighting that you have and it's, it's pretty standard kind of acorn type. And it's fine, it's fine, it works. It does what you need to do. There were some complaints from people that you need more light along your Main Street. There are, I guess, some shade and dark and people don't like that as a factor. Trash receptacles are the same. I mean, you can make those fancy or you could even have those welded. We don't show examples of that, but it could be similar to your furniture, whatever design that ends up being. Outdoor dining along Lagoon Street, we think would be really successful. It's interesting, right now when you look at it, the buildings actually have a hard blank walls onto Lagoon Street. And we think there's an opportunity there to open those up and make that more pedestrian Public parking. We talked a little bit already about parallel parking on Main, how it sometimes can feel a little, little dangerous. When I came here a couple of months back, I was really excited to see that at night, Main Street kind of lit up a little bit, kind of activated. People going to pizza places or some of those other facilities on the street.
Movie theater.
Movie theater. Yeah, there's a lot of move for that and I hope that theater is still on the market. The other, other thing that we found was really interesting and we know that alleys are utility corridors. I live on an alley. I, we're also doing a project right now in Colorado, Longmont, where they have gone through and actually said our alleys are going to be really cool spaces and so all the restaurants now are fixing them to the alleys. And they went in and ran the utilities and you can make alleys a special place. We're going to make them back areas. We know that they're really driven by utility, but there are ways to make them still pretty cool.
One thing with alleyways is we talked, two things on this one. If you haven't driven some of our commercial alleyways, we have made significant improvements in the institution structure. We've put down road milling and, and rolled that. Right, you can see that that, that helps the traffic. There's a lot more traffic that will help move through that and it's helpful for those commercial businesses. The other one, and it makes them safer. It does make them safer. The only thing that doesn't make them safer is when they eat your back onto the road. But one thing that is here is, is painting the parallel parking spots. If you, if you've driven down, oftentimes people that parallel park or, or park on Main Street, I can't call it parallel, they will take a spot and a half because they'll pull into it rather than actually parallel parking. They'll, they'll try to weave their car into that and try to park that way and it takes usually a lane and a half to do that. So we could increase the number of spots that could be utilized by painting that and making it more refined.
And so delineating, you know, how much space they have, like actually have to work with. Like you said, what happens is, is that each stall will be filled by three cars.
And we're working with UDOT. We've met with UDOT and talked to them about that.
So there's some suggestions through this report to talk about the alley, the alley areas and how you could treat those and then the public parking, how that could work. I'm a big, I'm a big fan of angled parking. You got a lot of that along Lagoon Street. You've got tons of parking and sometimes we tend to say on-street parking doesn't count, but lots of times for especially public facilities, it's all on-street parking. And so that, that should be weighed in, backed in more, moving forward and in ordinances and things like that, their kind of role. On-street parking is part of the parking requirement. So that helps mediate some of the costs for people. Kind of partners the private sector with the public sector. So they have a stake in the success of the public realm. So we have some before and after, what it looks like now and what we think it could be improved to through that process. And then some public space design elements. You can see that you've got the existing gathering space and we think there should likely be other opportunities and that you can define along Main Street and along Lagoon Street. And these are examples of places where they've actually taken advantage of those kind of carve-outs. Next one shows you a vacant lot that you have right there on Main Street, built as a kind of a public square. Now we have, if you've been to St. George, there's that, what we call the horse round ballot on Snow Canyon Parkway, if anyone's familiar with that. Kind of funny, people actually cross that dangerous road so they can get their picture taken with the horse or get up on the horse and man, post sign, family, can't do that reveal.
That's a, in Roosevelt.
It's a, it's a good, yeah.
If you, if you go to Park City, for example, you can see that there's places where they're hollowed out areas where they've created park sitting areas and that's where they start rolling their arts festivals and kind of access to this kind of award for other location. There's one thing in the public survey that I jumped past, but they use some typicals of three cities that have different grades.
Should I do Vernal's next?
Yeah, Vernal. Yeah, Vernal.
Who's ideal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Stevo Spring is ideal and I think Park City was a big improvement, the way it went. But that kind of a scale of one to 10, that took it through that scale. And there's some side guidelines to show how you can treat the parapets, the pilasters of the building. Then there's some facade guidelines to show how you can treat the parapets, uh, the pilasters of the building, the doorway of the openings, the glazing on the front. Uh, creating a front, middle and top, uh, and how you can deal with the existing structures and keep that active. And then some suggested materials, um, primary materials that should stay in place or if they're going to repair them. Um, you know, we talked about brick and natural stone, uh, painted woods, um, steel and cement fiber board for being like a permitted primary material and then a secondary material such as stucco or stuck open here. But making, moving away from some of the things that make it look like you're modernizing the street itself. Uh, and then this is, these are just examples of where these things can be and how they can be applied. Uh, building lighting, um, make some examples, make them down lighting to keep them nice, guy, friendly as possible. And then uh illumination, primary entrances. Awnings should be incorporated into your signage strategy. Uh, it'd be part of that and we talked about that with shading. Uh, and then you've got the unique condition in a little of actually having areas where there's a gallery, where the roof actually comes out over the sidewalk. Which are really uncommon nowadays. Most of those have been yanked. Um, and then if you apply all of these things, uh, some ornamental design details, uh, talking about how you can clean them up and make it a little more refined. And then um we talk about building signage and how blade signs pulling out are more pedestrian friendly and that you can enhance people's signage in front of their buildings and that needs to always be considered because we it's all about making the businesses or getting the businesses to succeed as a partner. And we make those suggestions in this report. And then then this last slide here is kind of a before and after. If you were to take your current facade, add some windows, look at some signage treatments, look at some planters in the front. Um, there's a fairly, I think a great transformation starting to take place along Main Street. Um, so that's kind of the presentation of what's in the guidelines. Um, questions?
I, I really like a lot of the designs and it's been a question for a long time of how, how do we keep our, who we are, but then clean up Main Street and make it look appealing and and.
Welcome.
Welcoming.
But in your case, it's all there under the metal.
Right.
And it's really cleaning it up instead of adding a bit of scrap.
And I think this, that brings us to uh probably this gentleman's uh um presentation as far as how do we motivate people to?
This would be given, uh, planning only did review except that we would accept this, that this is the presentation, but except you know, possibly moving, moving forward with this, we're taking time to to review it, but it has been around and has been um discussed in several spots. So depending on how you want to to move, there's modifications, changes, how would you like to move forward? We, we have a, we have a presentation. This would, this would um be the, the presentation. If you want something more changed, would be curious what we'd like to.
Comments on, yeah.
I just really like the idea of designating areas, you know, for remember the names you gave them, but I like the idea of um, you know, putting those corners out, you know, popping those out a little bit plus. Yeah, plus just designating areas, you know, along the walkway and the road and whatever for different things. And I'd love to see some of that stuff happen, you know, like furnishing zone and travel zone, building zone. And maybe give businesses guidelines as to how we'd like to see, you know, and outdoor dining, I think that's, that would do a lot for that.
I agree. I really think one of the things that personally I was concerned about is it almost like, it's hard to, like you said, the bones are there, but it's hard to picture how that could look and and something that we could possibly do that would look good, but not cost an arm and a leg. And I think that that that's what you've accomplished here.
Hopefully you can bear it together.
Yeah.
The thing that's really cool about your, your existing downtown, you go to a lot of these old downtowns and they're like one layer deep. You go back to the alley and everything kind of turns residential and you have that interface. You actually have whole blocks that you can work with, which is really uncommon.
Any other comments? Could we, would we entertain a motion to?
Would you like me to sit down? I'll roll you out.
The biggest concern with Mayor, I, I mean, it's not about presenting it. It's like having businesses that will make an investment and try to make a living out of them.
Yeah.
Which we've seen so many come and go and you've seen it all over rural areas. Uh, the competition is people don't shop for clothing in towns hardly anymore. I mean, it's pretty much internet and they, and they say, well, we need more cafes and that. And we've seen so many come and go in the recent years because they, they don't get enough clientele. It's like the city would have to make a fairer investment in this because a lot of the owners are not, they don't see a comeback, like the dancing studios, what do they care? Or even the salons. It, it, those are the ones which you mentioned, but that's what we have. And there are the few stores that are left. I mean, they're not retail too much in the, in what we had, three new pizza places come in in a few months, but that's my biggest concern. I love the thoughts there.
One, one thought real quick and then it listens like we have a couple of comments. Um, I agree that the burden that well, one, I think all the businesses would be grandfathered in if we did adopt this plan.
They're grandfathered at this point, at this point, the next conversation is, is, we don't want us to lead in the next conversation too far. This is one. The next one will be how we get there. Um, and some of those questions, how we get there are going to be discussed. And we could go into that if you like, but that's.
Well, I think uh as far as, uh, Councilman White, did you have a?
Just, just one, I, I really compliment you on this. I think it's very, very good. And I, I'm sensitive to what Councilman Labrum said, but I also think this, this does something for property owners on Main Street that they haven't had in the past per se, and that creates a vision. And some people have a hard time seeing how things can be just because their minds don't work that way. And I think by laying this out and saying, these are the possibilities, I think creates that even for a dance studio or salon, all of them want an attractive business front and a place to do business that draws people to them. I think it's a very good thing. I, I would like to see us take this and invite our business owners in Main Street and say, hey, these are, this is what we've studied and paid for.
Yeah.
Let's look at it.
Have we invited the RBA and some of those? That's what I was kind of thinking. And I know that EDC, the Economic Development Committee has looked at it as well.
We've met with them and got their input. I will tell you, um, if, if I can take up my city manager hat for you, I have one of those businesses and this is great for me. Um, because I own one of those businesses that are isolated um and and right there. Um, and and I can take that and say, if I know a standard of what everybody else is gonna do, it's a lot easier for me to do that design and and to redo some facade. Because then I can take and know that, that there's a plan in the future. Um, and that, and and mine, mine will fit right within this plan because it's been able to um to see that and I'll have, I'll have been in a match. Um, and and I think from a business owner, that's important for those to understand what there is. What they can do and what, what, what ideas they might have. It doesn't limit anybody to, to a specific one. Uh, you know, we have certain ones that don't necessarily fit where it's at. With their grandfather, and if they don't wanna change, they don't have to. Um, but this, this allows for that ability to say, here's what it could be if you want it to be that way. And it will be up to them to decide whether they actually want to do it that way or the wrong way.
Yeah.
And these are just guides to give us an idea of what we could do.
And we talked about, we have two others. Sorry. We talked about um creating incentives for people that would then want to upgrade their building and that's where your conversation will come in. And so.
That's good then.
There's things to do. Councilman Baird and then Councilman White.
I was just gonna say, I, I agree with everything Aaron said and everything you've said, city manager said. I I think it's really a, a good idea to, to go down this route. And I think if there is some inexpensive way that we could apply, you know, some of these principles to a certain area, specifically with the corners and bringing those out and painting them or doing something like that, just to kind of give a fill and maybe plant a couple of trees and furnish a couple of areas, just to kind of give them the vision of this is what we're aiming for across the whole street. That'd be good, but I don't know if there's a way to do that anyways.
And maybe it's not large trees. I mean, you, you saw in the planters, they had some of those little miniature pine tree uh bushes. Maybe it's something that's not a, a larger tree or they were conscious of that visual. I, I think something green all year. We get a lot of complaints about what happens in the winter because it just gets greasy. We have great flowers in the summer. We have great color. Um, but that wintertime is tough one. And if there was a way to find something that was never green, that they could add.
I was thinking cottonwoods would be perfect down there. The cotton and the leaves and.
They grow fast.
Yeah.
No, once in a while, I guess we thought that they're, that they're all over the side.
Councilman White.
And they lift up the sidewalks. Yeah, they do. So it's kind of a, it's a great skateboard.
You had a comment for it?
Yeah, I just, in, in looking at this presentation, I think people kind of get stuck in, well, this is how it's always been. But then you have maybe even some of those same people, why can't we have more people coming downtown? And and the thought that, that I had is not unique or new, but if you always do what you've always done, you're gonna always have what you've always had. You're not gonna get anything new. So we have to look at some of these things and incorporate something maybe different than we've done in the past. Try to generate that activity that we want down there. Cause if we leave it the way it is, chances are we're gonna have what we've always had.
Just one more question, Mayor, comment?
Yeah.
As far as adopting this as a plan, do, you know, we kind of went through some of these things relatively quickly, but is there something in there that talks about where signage would face? Or how it'd face, whether it's perpendicular, parallel to the road?
Is this a preliminary and then we, to move forward with this ideal and then?
Guideline, guidelines more than, more than set. Um, so at that point, we talked about awning and encouraging sign types. So there is a, there is a section that talks about the incursion of sign types and and placement. So there's incursion, but it's not.
That would, that would be my, I guess, my feeling, you know, as we really look at a, a different approach. There's so much great evidence out there, the, the facing of that signage makes a big difference. And I was at Orem, I'll divert for just a minute the other day and was looking for a unique place to have breakfast and found a place called Joe's. Maybe you guys know where it is, on State Street. Drove by it three times before I found it because it had no sign. And it's a little teeny spot like this. But had that sign been there, it'd make a big difference. And it's a very packed place, little teeny tiny place.
They had to take the sign down.
To get another table. That just, I, I would just suggest strongly that, you know, if we go in this direction, that we do have some, some, some strong things in there that will help businesses and also let us find a way to help fund some of these things too.
Does the council feel like this is um far enough in the direction we wanna go that we can make a motion to proceed and then add and then revisit some of those things as they come up?
I'll make that motion. Okay.
I'll second it.
And we have a, a motion to proceed with, with the design and then also follow up with uh certain, certain things. And we have that motion made by Councilman Labrum and a second by Councilman White. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Roy.
Good job.
Uh, right.
I think you guys are so happy for it.
Magic fairy dust.
Remind us of your name.
Yes, sir. I'm Cody Peter with E F G Consulting, that's for energy, finance and government. And my role in this project is to figure out how do we help pay for these projects? As you can, as you mentioned, say, okay, business owners, you are now going to upgrade your building. That's, that's not going to happen. So we'll talk about a couple of, of ideas. One is using your redevelopment agency. The other is we have applied for the Bear Grant.
We have applied for the Bear Grant.
Yeah, we applied for Bear Grant, uh, which would mean the city's bringing some money and Bear Grant's gonna put in some money so people could come and apply for funds. And this is another tool where we can generate additional revenues that they could then apply uh for these funds. So let's talk about what an RDA is. You have a dormant redevelopment agency. You've got to use it for many years, but it still exists. So we'll talk a little bit about what that RDA is, um, how they work, uh, how can tax increment, property tax increment be used? Uh, what's the timeline to create a project area, which is where it's gonna flow? And then we'll talk specifically about ideas from Main Street, how these two can come together.
Right.
So the next one. So first of all, what is an RDA? It's a redevelopment agency of Roosevelt City. And it's a separate legal entity that was created by this city many years ago. The board of the RDA is the, by statute, the council members. Uh, it is an economic development tool that focuses on redirection of property tax primarily. That's its primary focus. A few other things that it can do if you own property, uh, but primarily it's used to redirect property tax. So you have a current RDA board, but I don't think it's been alive for, I can't even tell you how many years. It still exists on, on that reference of, of the state. Well, we can, we can resurrect that very easily by just having a board, a board being, posting an agenda, having a board meeting, having another at some point, a budget. So thanks, man.
We had to make some major differences in our city, but that was used back in the day. That's where the old Woolley Alley, that is now the Dollar Tree, that was built and then tore down the old motel and it got the heart of the, uh, the downtown theater, the one that's in front of the bought the old cash beats and tore it down. So there was some, some historically cool times. Back in the seventies, eighties.
That's good to know. I wasn't sure if you had one.
The sorry mag.
Yes, Paul Hurricane.
Alright, so let's talk about how tax increment works. So the first thing that as a redevelopment agency, you go to create a project area, which is a geographic boundary. In this case, it would likely be at least the, the eight blocks we talked about, certainly the, maybe the eight and maybe even more than that along Main Street. We can decide how long we want that and where we want tax increment to come from. It provides tax increment for a period of time. So it's usually, the most common standard is seventy-five percent of the tax increment for twenty years. So let's talk about what tax increment is. So this graph on the bottom, uh, the blue is what's happening today. That's the value of the, of, let's call that Main Street, the blue down there. You're, you're current, you're getting tax revenue and all the other taxing needs are getting tax revenue from that today. If you do nothing, it'll stay the same. The idea is then we encourage businesses to build a new infrastructure, new facade which raises the value. So the value of the blue continues to flow to all the taxing needs like it always has, but that new value that's created. So let's say someone puts a fifty thousand dollar facade in a building, now they're gonna have to pay more taxes because the, the building is worth more. We redirect seventy-five percent of that value to this board so that they can be used to help them offset their costs. And then the twenty-five percent would flow to all the taxing needs.
So you have to have a, a, is somebody willing to invest before?
Money flows.
Money flows.
Yes, that's right.
I just did that. Put me in that zone.
The, the good news is you can negotiate with the taxing needs and say, you know, we, we had some investment last year. Can we move the, that blue line even though it's a little bit higher? Can we move it back to last year's value? Because we did have some growth and we wanna redirect that to encourage some, to get some momentum. We can have those discussions with each of the taxing needs. We have to have an agreement with each of those groups, with the city, the county, the school district, law and security. We can have those negotiations. And we can make the project area bigger to, to capture more of Main Street, even though maybe the money's not gonna flow down to Burger King necessarily, but we want it to flow to the middle of Main Street and have people apply for funds. We can do that. We, we just have to have a common vision and a common goal and then negotiate that with the taxing needs and with the participants. So then at the end of, you know, 20 years, call it, then all that new value would then flow to all the taxing needs. There would be a finite timeframe for these groups to use that money. That makes sense? Does that make sense how tax increment works?
Would you assist? Because I know we've done it with like Central Utah, for example. We worked with cities as far as water district and reducing our our liability or tax liability so that it would go back to that entity for growth and certain projects and those types of things. So do you assist with negotiating those types of things?
Absolutely. So I would help you create that project area and negotiate each of those agreements. It would be an interlocutory agreement with each of those entities.
Okay.
Do that in the process. Yeah, definitely. All right, so the next one. How can tax increment be used? This is more broad, you know, what we're thinking here, but it can be used to reimburse development costs. You can buy or buy down land if you wanted to. You could buy the building if you wanted to and sell it back to someone. So you can, you know, buy it down for them. It's a hundred thousand dollar building. You go in and say, we'll buy that and sell it back to you for ninety thousand. And so that tax increment can then reimburse you over time for that $10,000 investment you made in someone's business. It can provide direct development incentives. You can just get them money directly for the things that they do. Or it can be used for public infrastructure. If there's anything that needs to be done in that regard. So you can pay for planters and pay for the cool things that are redesigned. You can pay for those things if they're owned by the city. Cannot pay for a public building, however, you didn't say, we're going to build City Hall and we're going to ask the the school district to pay for that. There's a specific reason that's in the law and that's the specific reason that I just shared. All right, so the next one. All right, what's the criminal process? So if you think this is a good tool, then the first thing to do is the board resurrected and we adopt a survey resolution. That says, here's the boundaries that we're thinking of using. And then we start doing projections of how much revenue do we think could potentially be derived from this this area if certain investments occur over time? We do that back and we put that into a draft project area plan that says, here's what we're going to do in the area and a draft project area budget, which says, here's the money that's available to make that happen. That takes, you know, thirty, thirty to forty-five days to put those project areas together and then a public hearing and noticing process. And people can come and put their consent in about what's going on. That in that plan, that's where we describe probably the incentive structure that we're thinking, which most likely would have people come and apply for the funds and and start talking about what type of agreements we would make. If you put in fifty thousand, we promise we're going to, you do certain things, you put that money in, we promise we will do certain things, give you money back off of your taxes. That's where we describe those. Then we'd be required to enter into negotiations with each of those taxing needs, like I mentioned before. And this is where the challenge comes. We have to go to the school district and say, do you capture our vision of what we're trying to do with Main Street? Do you see how we're trying to unite the community and bring students across Lagoon Street, all the way to the library? Can you see what we're trying to do? This is the most challenging part because members of the school board ran not to worry about. That's not the reason they ran to be on the school district board, but that's part of their duty is to talk about this. This is the hardest negotiations with the school district.
And just a thought, and it's, and I think it's critical that we we have, we do what we can to have a good working relationship with the school district because there could be some politics played in there based on that. The next item we have is a tool that I think we can use to help unite some of our entities like that. But because we need them, we got to be partners with them.
Absolutely. There are some school districts that totally understand this vision. If the water rises, all boats rise with it. And there are others that say, you know, the school board and we're going to look out for our own. But you have the same constituents. The same people voted us in as voted you in, but you just have to have those negotiations and be, and I can't tell you the right answer. It's very much derived from who you are as board members and who they are as board members and understanding their personalities. I don't know superintendent, the business manager and the board members, but you guys do. So we have to collaborate on how those negotiations will move forward because they could blow up. I have to come in and totally mess everything up without your input. We don't want to do that. Then what we need is develop a very structured Main Street program. We would use the Bear Grant, assuming we can receive that as funds to be injected. It could be like a revolving loan fund or just a straight reimbursement. We would want to develop that program with the business owners so they knew what it was, you know, how it would work. They would have to take some risk. You would have to take some risk and have to share the vision of how it might work. One of those business owners is over here, so you may be able to start with people that you know and trust and hopefully have an opportunity to, you know, have some ones and twos first to show.
That would be the money that would be injected initially until the TIF gets into place.
That's right.
Which would be good.
We also have like A O G S, the revolving loan fund as well, that we can tap into. And then maybe some other ideas along in the future.
Just as generalities, what's the Bear Grant? What's the availability of that funding? What's the amounts that are you're able to grab?
We've applied great hundred thousand dollar grant in there.
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred. We don't know that we would expect to get that, but we thought, hey, we'll shoot for everything we could possibly get. Overall, it's a business expansion and retention grant. We have had Dorothy Carter that has been paid out of that over the years from the business outreach. This is one of the first years they've actually opened it up more broadly so that more things can fit. So this is kind of a, they've opened the gate and we're hoping that we'd be one of the first ones in through that gate. And because this is one of the first years, I think this is actually the first year they've actually opened it up to bigger projects like this because they haven't done that in the past.
It's been very much this business outreach, like here's, here's the box we fit in. If you want to have business outreach, you can apply for the funds. And now they said, maybe you have different ideas. Why don't you just tell us what they are and tell us how your budgets can work and your timeframe and your goals. They used to also have a cap. You can say, this is the amount of funds you can apply for. And this year they said, there is no cap. So we said, okay.
And we said, hey, if we could have this much money, then we could maybe resurface all of them and have a grant for that.
Yeah.
Share that down. We're cautious to say the least that we would get much or hoping we would get some and it could start to inject it. But that's one of our first ones is hoping that the Bear Grant will inject into this process.
Did I hear that there was necessary matching funds? So whatever we got.
Twenty percent match.
Twenty percent.
The total application, a hundred is a million dollars, eight hundred thousand grand, two hundred thousand. So it's an eighty twenty that we proposed.
It's cheap money.
Yeah.
We try to keep the eighty twenty. Anytime we can apply an eighty twenty money to that. We're applying when we can find that one.
So we'll get feedback later in the in the summer. They may say we're totally crazy, but I think it's, it was a great timing for us and we kind of stepped into that good opportunity. So how long does this process take to do from start to finish to develop a redevelopment area, project area going sixty to a hundred and eighty days? If everything runs smoothly, it's fast, but it's that negotiation part that takes the longest. And then in this case, developing that program, because we don't want to develop a program in this room and then take it to the downtown folks. It's got to be collaborative because, you know, we can't just push it on their shoulders and say, this is how it is. That's probably not going to work. Have to be a collaborative process. So it may take a little bit of time, but we have really till the end of the year to get it done before the tax rolls close. So that's, there's not an amazing rush. We just want to keep it moving forward and keep the momentum rolling on what raise our redevelopment forms. So next page, I think that's it. Do you have questions for me that I might answer? You can use this tool for a lot of other purposes too. We're just talking about Main Street or any other, you know, economic development, mind coming to communities, this tool can use as well.
I think it's a good idea and I think it's answered some of the questions as how we how we get to the end result and also not put a huge burden on the business owners on that street.
At least to share.
Yeah, shared cost.
One of the challenges probably is of, I don't know if all of the businesses, a fair amount of them are renters and that that probably becomes an issue as we deal. Who's the owner that's going to put in the money and who's? So that's the other big thing. It's not, I bet it's less than fifty fifty.
It's a good question. And it depends on the nature of the lease. If it's a triple net lease and the taxes are.
Yeah.
Being passed through then or how that's going to work. Very good question.
There's a lot of variabilities, but it's great.
That's not a, but if this is a, this is a tool that if you wanted to use, we can, you know, resurrect the R D A and have a, you know, have a public meeting and adopt the survey resolution. We can move that process forward whenever you're ready to do that. But it's an excuse to come back to Roosevelt Consulting.
We can do that without all the meetings. We need to get that certain entity set up as soon as possible to move forward.
It's actually set up. All we'd have to do is.
We just need to have it on our agenda resurrected.
We might have a separate meeting other than a council meeting.
It could be before, after, this morning.
Yeah.
Just recess out the issue.
I guess, Mayor, if we're looking for a motion to proceed, a motion would proceed and start the process with the R D A?
I'd second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So we'll move forward with that.
Sounds good. I'll put a calendar together with all the steps we need to take.
Thank you.
Exciting stuff.
Next, we have Resolution twenty nineteen two ninety-five. So we we saw this original resolution come before the council last meeting. It was the council's feeling to have the staff look at that. We did have staff look at that. I had said that I would be to the meeting to visit with them about some of their concerns and showed up this morning and realized the meeting was yesterday. But we did have Councilman Labor there who did visit with them and and talk to them a little bit about maybe some of their concerns and things. But anyway, it sounds like there's some positive feedback. Few minor concerns, it sounds like, but Councilman Labor, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
First and foremost, they were very appreciative that the council would think enough of them to at least review it. And they were very, they had all reviewed it. And really, their biggest concern is just having another layer of bosses, you know, not helpers, but another. And then here on powers and duties on three and four, that was their biggest concerns. Number three, review existing and or proposed policies, ordinances and resolutions related to or affecting arts, parks and recreation in Roosevelt. They were concerned that that's, and I'd have to say I was, that that's more of our elected council as we get into those. And the other one was recommend policy additions and or revisions. I can see that both ways because if you have a committee and they're working, you want them to make recommendations and to be looking for things. And if you don't ever listen to them, then the committees lose their, I mean, why are we here and what should we do? But they would, they would support it. That's what they felt and they were concerned that just about. I think we could adjust something there that that was what I was thinking. Ryan was there.
Councilman.
I just, I just, as you read over those concerns and they were okay with the council doing that, but but this is the council's way of doing that.
Yeah.
They say, we don't have time to go and review this. Will this group of people go and then tell us what you find? Then we discuss it and.
And I think you're right. I think and Councilman Labor and I talked about this a little bit. I think if it specified that they recommend policy to the council and and not that they're going to the staff and telling the staff.
Right.
What they need to do. But if they're making those recommendations to the council, ultimately it is the council's decision to to pass policy or and and do those things. And so I can see where they might be concerned if if we have a committee and the committee feels like they're going to tell the staff what to do because that's really not what it's designed.
And that was, that was their only real concern.
It's there to brainstorm, to think of ways how we can improve and those types of things. And those recommendations would come before the council and then the council would make policy. And then the staff would implement policy accordingly to where you have the proper channels being being done. Now, if this was ever to be transitioned into a parks and rec district, that's a totally different thing. But currently it's just a committee, an advisory committee and a committee forum to to bring public involvement, organization and those types of things. And we had talked previously about, you know, having maybe arts council as a part of this commit, you know, just a member of part of the committee, but I really liked the idea that it would kind of take the place of the base and arts council and incorporate the recreational side of that and all of them working together to produce.
But you would kind of need a spearhead for the arts and then they all meet together and then they coordinate schedules.
Yeah.
I think that's what would make the committee is people that are concerned in the certain areas. And they come together and mix and.
I think on the economic development side, we've done subcommittees that are, you know, so they have certain tasks that they overlook. And I think this would be very similar.
That's what would have to happen.
In the sense of have subcommittees that would focus on certain areas of recreation or arts and then come together and discuss those. And, you know, we had some concern with, you know, mandating certain sports or something coming and happen to participate. And I think we don't want that. We don't want people to feel like they're obligated to come. We just want people to feel like they're, they have a place to come if they so choose. And so it would be, instead of mandating positions or certain sports or things to be participants, we would just open it up to the public and look for certain people that would be involved in those areas.
Did I cover, just a couple of other things, just to add to that. I thought, I think they were all very excited, especially if they could feel some of that base and arts council void that's there. Anything that will create more activities. I think the entire group from staff side, we're excited to say, if there's activities or things that are generated from the committee, more things for the public to do more. We missed the arts council and if those are things that this committee can do, I think, I think the staff was quite excited about those items. They were curious if it was more service and I think that was one of the questions. It was, is it an opportunity like like the, they have a golf group, we call it a committee because it's not formed that way. They've got a golf group that helps them to put together tee boxes and they've been great help there. And so if there's things that they can grow and help the community and the city be better, I think everybody was on board.
With special skills and that, that they could coordinate and help each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they were very, maybe the, I guess it's just the board, but Brian, are you here for this part?
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm speaking out of place.
No, go ahead.
On the recreation part of it, I'm in support of a committee. I think you should involve as many high school coaches as you can.
Yeah.
In this. Our youth, they struggle when they get to the high school level. I think that's because we don't have a committee like this that has knowledgeable people that can direct in the right direction. So that's.
That's what, Brian and I had talked about this a while back a little bit and that's one of the visions that that I think was was talked about is how we have, and and we talk about working with these other entities, the school district. The school district is really in support of this. You know, I've talked to Superintendent Brotherson, a lot of the principals, the coaches, to where we have an organization, to where we have communication between the little league sports and those types of things that are going on on through up, through high school and identifying those things that that we can work on. I mean, we have a, an amazing high school. And if we can match our sports programs to the high school that we have, and we can, but it'll take a collaborative effort with citizens and those people that are volunteering time and school district and coaches and and trying to bring those groups together, talking. talking, communicating and and making that work throughout, so that that's really what the intent is.
And now with the new.
A good part of it.
Indoor practice facility that's about, I think July first is the day it's supposed to be turned over. I mean, that's another big thing that needs to be coordinated, but it'll be under the school district.
Sure.
But when it, you know, having a son that's coaching and doing, it's a hard thing to keep a program going because they don't get paid in the summer, but yet he's doing camps for baseball and football and anybody else that does it, it's all for free, but it's so hard to do those things for free all the time.
That's a perfect example of, you know, if you had a committee come together and there was some some conversation with that.
Yeah.
Maybe you could get the public to to say.
Be aware of that.
Be aware of that and.
It's the same with any other sport, any of the the high school coaches, basketball, soccer, and if you're doing anything, there's so. That's been one of the hard things of why to keep a program going all the time, because they just can't keep the coordination as much.
Mayor.
Yes.
I I agree with what everybody said, I just have one suggestion maybe to tie it all together relative to three and four. I think they're kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why don't we just, this is some language I propose. Review existing and or propose or recommend new policies, ordinances, resolutions related to or affecting arts, parks and recreation in Roosevelt City as requested by the city council. So when the city council says, tell us about this, have them go do it. I think that's what Councilman.
That's really, that that I like that.
And it focuses it on that.
So.
Then I just scratched number four.
Uh, so I agree with you, um, as requested by city council, is that or what other way to say it, or should we say, um, should we have it basically be recommend policy or whatever to the council because.
Either way is fine with me, I'm just just saying that.
I think to the council. You don't want to tie somebody's hand and be like, are we, can we go to the council and ask them if we can re, like, think of ideas, I I just think I get what you're saying and I get what you're saying, if we could just say, I think it really needs, tho- those things need to come to the council for review and and make ensure that they understand that that the policies and things they're recommending, they're not to to go directly to the staff and say, hey, we want the lawn loads like.
Right.
You know, three times a week instead of two, you know, I mean, those types of things, so we want to make sure that those recommendations come for the council for review and not directly, and I think that's where the fear may lie. And so maybe we, I like that combining the two and just putting recommend policy additions and or revisions to the council.
They could do like.
I was just gonna suggest maybe putting recommend at the beginning of the sentence, recommend comma review.
I like that, recommend.
Yeah.
Review.
Review.
Or existing.
Recommend and review.
Recommend or review.
Or or review.
Whatever. But the reason I say is to the council because sometimes the council wants a, and to me it can be both ways, we could say have them recommended to the council or as recommended by the council. Because sometimes we may want them very specifically to say, you know what, we've got an ordinance relative to this, would you go take time and and really review it, research it, bring it back to us. We also want to be able to say, welcome what they're saying. So I I understand what you're saying. That the intent, I think, is the same, I don't.
See, and or in the legal, um, I don't know if it does or not, but would or mean and or because or encompasses and.
Yeah. Probably had an. And or, I would say and or.
But or would encompass an and, like, I know in scientific literature is you write, you don't write and or, you write or.
Most of us don't have a degree in science.
I'm just saying, I don't know how it is from a legal perspective. But I just want them to feel comfortable doing all those things and, you know, add our recommendation like Aaron's saying, or if they just want to weave into something just to to make a recommendation.
Cause they're going to see, they're going to see things that could potentially be improved or changed and and we would want them to feel free to come to the council and.
Take a recommendation.
Make a recommendation, yeah.
I would just put an and in there.
I just looking and saying if we can use the existing and or if that, if we say recommend review.
Yeah, I like that, recommend review, existing and or proposed policies, yeah.
It reads fine.
Yeah, I think it reads just fine.
Anyway, instead of having and or twice, it's just trying to.
Yeah.
Have a word, you know, better, better craft that.
I'm like, I think that's, do we need a?
Any other thoughts, I I didn't see anything else in there that.
Yeah, I like that.
I would make a point of uh, switching resolutions and ordinances because then it goes in order.
Oh, yeah, order of weight.
I'm okay with whatever wording, as long as the spirit of the rule, or not rule, but but, you know, the provision is there, so.
Like going back to the constitution.
Motion to adopt resolution?
Uh, yeah. Any other discussion on that? If if not, yeah.
I'll move to adopt resolution twenty nineteen two ninety five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Wade and a second by Councilman Barrett, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes, let's get busy. So, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Ryan, thanks for coaching them.
Yeah.
All right, next item, can we just be done? No, I'm just kidding, I don't see Kurt.
Mayor, I'm, I'll represent Kurt, he texted me a little while ago and he has a son who is, has an opportunity to collegiate baseball. I guess he's at a tryout camp or something, I don't know anything. Kurt came or was coming, just to share with the council, Kurt Case is the owner of K and U and Jack FM. He's also a friend of mine and sits on our board of trustees, uh, our board of directors, he came to me a while back with a thought and an idea that he had of something he wanted to do to bring some stimulus to Roosevelt City for an event. So as we talked about the event, um, they want to bring a free concert or a series of concerts in conjunction with a car show that we're going to have on September twenty first, it'll be called the Fall Festival. And it'll be held at UB Tech's campus in Roosevelt, be entirely free to the public.
Twenty first?
Yes, the first day of fall. So it's a Saturday, twenty first of September. He's excited about it, I was delighted that he chose to come to Roosevelt City, initially they were planning to go to Naples. He really felt like he wants, he wants to bring something in a positive way to Roosevelt where basically his investments are held close to us and wants to do something to to bring and and drive economic stimulus to the city, so I think from a city's perspective, obviously that's exciting for us to do that, he doesn't necessarily need or is asking for anything, it's just, I think, as we get it on our events calendar and get pushing, you know, the event itself. I think it can be a great thing and I think it'd be appropriate for us to, you know, express our appreciation for him thinking of us and wanting to be a part of the city.
That's great.
We have an annual, when is the normal?
It's coming up soon, this is July, I believe.
Yes, it is, it's twenty, it's about the nineteenth usually, right on that weekend, third weekend of July, I think.
So it'll be about two months apart?
You know, um, I think it's, go ahead. Of July? Okay, I think it's, that's a great thing and and you know, it it raises a question, I hate to take too much time talking about things that aren't directly, but this is kind of on the agenda, so, um, this is something I think if we could get that committee established fairly quickly, he could utilize that committee to help orchestrate some of those things, get the word out and that. I I also had a question on the red mud run as, you know, I know that's a committee that's formed and and comes together once a year and then it kind of you know, they go do their own thing, that may be something we could look at that committee tackling too and keep the same people that are currently helping with that, obviously, but then they'd have that other group to to help, you know, carry some of that load and responsibilities and those types of things. I don't know what your feeling would be on that, but.
I think it's good to push it, you know, in the case of this, it's probably.
Little too.
It it might be quick, but the the two endies, from the college perspective, it's a recruiting event for automotive students. And from his perspective, I think he's probably handling all the advertising through his radio stations, that's what I'm expecting anyway.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know what.
What another.
What another, you know, thing would do, but the vision he has is having, you know, the food vendors there, having capabilities for people to come and enjoy the the day, the afternoon, uh, evening. I don't know who he's got on tab for concerts, I would imagine be a lot of local talent and maybe somebody a little more of a headliner in the evening time, but he's planning a full stage setup similar to what UBAC has, sounds like it's, it may be noisy for a minute.
At least it's on that, I mean, there's not a lot of residential on that side of town, it's in Roosevelt City anyway.
Yeah.
Or will they stage it?
They'll, they'll stage it in the parking lot.
In the ba, in the south?
Actually, it'll be in the, on Lagoon, on Lagoon Street side, so it'll be on the, it would be our west, northwest parking lot.
Okay. You're right by the high school.
Yeah.
That'd utilize a lot of parking there.
There's a, there's a brand new parking lot to the rear and a parking lot to the side, so parking will not be an issue.
And it's a free event?
Free event, hundred percent.
I'll see Mayor Abercrombie on Thursday and I'll let him know. Just to mention it on in their meeting, some things can get poured out, so obviously it'll be advertised.
That's right. Word will start to get out here in the next month or so.
Great.
Tell all your friends, bring your family, come have hot dogs.
Perfect.
Look and eat cars.
Anything else on that?
That's it, thank you.
Purchase orders, I saw those go down the line, are there any questions on purchase orders?
I'm looking for you to approve them.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Labor.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Burdick, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, reports from standing committees, do you have any reports tonight, Councilman Labor?
Uh, we talked about the parks, one thing I was, if there was anything more on the motel about following, get that emolition finished?
We've talked to them, we're working on that, so we have this, we have out, we have reached out to them and we're working on that. We haven't got it finalized.
Are they moving, I mean, are they responding or?
They have responded, we had, we're scheduling a meeting to have them come out and go onsite and tell them to know what we need to finish it up.
Thank you.
Anything else?
None.
Uh, Councilman White.
Today was ULCT board meeting, we got an email from Ryan, I believe, encouraging participation in some of the open seats, they talked about those. There were some last minute applications that came in, so they didn't, uh, select on some of them and I think some of them are still open, I don't know that they got.
This.
All filled.
Is this the same? Do you hold one of those seats in there?
I don't, I'm not on one of those.
Okay, so you're on.
This is just a committee that is tasked with other things, I'm just on the board, but anyway, they talked about those, the tax discussion, it's gonna be July the ninth, somehow, I I had to go in and out of the meeting and they talked about.
That's at.
I'm a little worried. Six AM. You're gonna have to somehow be involved with that.
They would like to have you speak, um, I believe that that's what it's talked about, is that they'd like to have you speak for, um, ULCT as the region. Because you're the board.
What they will do is they'll send me.
I thought you were joking affirm.
How they do that is they'll send me a letter and then I will forward that on to the rest of the cities that are in my part of the region. Encouraging that or input or participation in that. Whatever is more than that, I either missed or hoped that they were, I was mishearing.
I think they'd like to have a united voice, um, and because you're on the board and and they'd like to have that, rather than have all the cities and all the coun- council and all of, all of the members of the ULCT speak, they want to have a concerted voice, I'm assuming they'll send you letters. That was my conversation with, um, when I talked with Cameron, he had three things that he wanted me to make sure that I was aware of, one, to help you in any way you can on that. To invite the mayor to be welcoming and talk about.
So are you gonna speak? I can welcome the people if he'll speak, that's easy.
So anyway, that's kind of their, their.
I'm not prepared at this point to speak, but we'll see.
So, and that's at six o'clock is what I have on.
At six o'clock, it will be a informal.
And then at seven.
And then at seven o'clock starts the open forum, so they'll open up, any questions or the public, be here from seven to nine.
Can I have Lee welcome him?
Yes, specifically for you. And they also asked that then we have a police presence, of course, I've already talked to the chief about that.
Great.
So we, uh, we expect that there will be a lot, we expect that there's nine, no, eight, eight locations there going throughout the state, uh, and it is referenced to, um, House Bill four forty and and that they proposed a huge tax broadening of base on on a lot of taxes and they got a lot of pushback and so we're, we're expecting this potential pushback as they go around, they've chosen Roosevelt to come to, whether that's good or bad or different, I don't know, but that's, we're welcoming them and they're gonna have several others, but we are one of the two or three rural spots they're going to.
Lars is one of the first.
Yeah, Lars is one of the first, they've had one, um, there's not one in Vernal or Shane or anywhere else, this is the one for the entire.
Great, I'm excited.
So anyway, um, it, uh, it should be a very good event, we'll advertise and we'll try to recruit people to come that are interested and engaged in that topic, so. Anyway, that was, can I add a?
Thank you. Well, we have that on the calendar, we'll be prepared, won't we?
Yeah, they might be.
Anything else for us, do you have anything for us, Councilman Barrett?
No.
Okay, I do have, I'm pleased to announce that Johnson Water has approved the contract.
Okay.
Super.
And so there were a very minor clerical errors that they needed to, um, in chapter or section fourteen, it had referenced cha, uh, section twelve, referencing itself as section twelve because we pushed a couple of those down. Just very minor clerical errors, um, but those are fixed on their end, they're gonna sign and as soon as they have it signed, I'll go and and get the copies, bring them to Carolyn and we'll get that signed and done, so. That's one thing out of the way, um, other than that, we have our economic development committee meeting coming up on Thursday, if anybody would like to attend from noon to one. And, uh, we've had some good conversations and things going on there, um, missed the chamber meeting in Vernal, I wanted to take a look at how they do that, I was invited to go and and I want to get to one of those and start to incorporate some of the ideas, they get really good attendance and and things, we'll start to incorporate some of their ideas into into what we're doing there.
What do you mean?
Uh, here, at the, uh, in the council chamber, yeah. So, and lunch is provided, so if you're hungry, stop on by.
Kurt's picked the pizzas, so you can taste all the different options.
All seven options that we have.
Subway's.
Okay, so, but that's all I have, so, um, we are moving forward with that and, uh, that's been a long time coming. Yeah, we'll get a quorum this time. I hope, we'll see, it, summer's busy, a lot of people are busy, but we thought it would be good just to keep the continuity of it and keep consistent and so if we have a quorum, great, if we don't, we'll visit and eat and not make any major decisions.
We have the EDC of Utah coming out to present.
And that's going to be a good.
Be a good one to have. Anyway, we'll work with them to try and bring that.
And I think it, the more we do that and if we can get those Utah entities coming out, that helps us and gives us a vision of what we can do to link with what they're doing and start to, to, you know, to get some of those, filter some of that stuff our way, so it's good. Uh, that's all I have, Councilman Wade, do you have anything?
Nothing new, other than, Ryan, do we have a count on how many have registered for the red mud run as of yet?
Don't have one yet, that's the last I've known, but our count is generally very low on the, um, pre-signups. But most of our signups, I'd say seventy-five percent are. But most of our signups, I'd say seventy-five percent of our signings come that day. And that's really how it's been since I've been here is it's few sign up prior, some of the big, um, teams, but most sign up that.
Good morning. Good. Nothing new.
Thank you. Councilman Burdick?
Do you have anything to report? Maybe a request, uh, as far as the gun range? The, the first thing that we would need to do before taking any action would be see what it would cost to put a fence in.
Oh, good idea.
Between the sewer. In the sewer ponds and the range area.
I think there's a fence, uh, uh, all the way down except for the very last pond. And I think that's the only one that doesn't have a fence. And I think it's even a chain link with the wire, if I'm not mistaken, down to that point, but that's a good thought.
We'd like to make sure that we have.
I'm not sure. I just know Kirby had mentioned that it has to be fenced completely.
Yeah. Good thought.
And one of those is because we have access coming in through the top fence, we'd need to make sure that it's all fenced and we have that connected. We can look into that. Um, one other thing on the gun range over there, um, we did have, um, the, uh, request to get it, um, drone flow fly, fly over so we can get the, um, elevations and that. And, uh, we're still waiting to get that data back. We don't have that. It, it, it doesn't look like we'll have it back Thursday.
Okay.
Um, we are looking to get that, but we will send it out to the committee once we have it.
As soon, yeah, as soon as we get that, we can meet as the, the subcommittee on that and, uh, start to, and hopefully with the engineer altogether and start to plan that out. Um, I did talk to Mayor Abercrombie and they're actually pretty excited about that. And, uh, I don't know to what degree they would want to be involved, but I think we might be able to count on them for a little bit of help getting that done down there as well. So.
Did we talk to them at all about road on that way?
You know what? I haven't, but if I see him on Thursday, I'm pretty sure I will. Uh, we have a, a meeting here at U Bag. I'll mention that to him and just, cause I know that they brought that up as a concern.
They've had concerns with that with the oil traffic. They just was concerned that they brought that as a concern.
Didn't mention anything to me about it. I can, I can specifically ask him, but yeah.
There is no concern about it.
I know. Anything else for us? All right, um, let's go.
I did, Mayor, I came to a meeting here about two weeks ago on that, the bike trail for the whole county.
Oh, yeah.
They had the open. It was minutely attended, but they held it and gave all the presentation.
They had a really good, um, attendance in DuChane.
Did they?
I, I made it to that one. And they had probably, I'd say sixty to seventy people there. And, uh, but it will, that will be a definite positive thing for our community if we can get. Thank you. Do you have anything for us?
Just a couple of items. Um, like we, we've talked, we did submit our bear application. Um, we are working on other grant applications still with E D A. Um, it should be, we're hoping to get it done within the next week or two. We are working to finalize our enterprise own, uh, credit application, which is another avenue to help businesses along Main Street and others. Kind of keep in mind, we have our fun on forty this week. Um, and so with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, they're highlighting those businesses along Main Street in the same kind of corridor. Um, and we invite you to that. It's on Thursday from.
One to.
One to four.
It actually just expanded the hours. It's now gonna be from noon to.
Noon to four.
So we'd welcome you there, uh, be able to come down, um, any opportunity to visit that and visit those businesses that are along there. We'd like to be able to highlight them. Um, so people know what's there. I mean, lots of people, we talked about it. We get lots of traffic that, that drive through. But we'd like to make sure that people in the community know what's actually there and, and highlight them. And, uh, so anyway, so that's one. Um, we, uh, we have, uh, our construction projects well underway. Eight hundred south should be paved this week, hopefully by, uh, Thursday or Friday. We're hopeful for that. Um, six hundred north and some of those side streets up there have been milled. And they're getting cement treatment. That cement treatment should, cement treatment should finish by the end of this week. Uh, hopefully paving will start next week and chipping within the next couple of weeks. Um, third north, the gas line is, uh, the gas company has another couple of weeks in there. Um, but they're replacing their main line through there and the, um, service lines out of there. Um, the airport.
Can I, can I make a comment really quickly on Third North? Just because I've heard a little bit of feedback. Did we ever, um, before we started that project, did we ever let them know, some of the feedback that's coming to me is that there's a mandatory connection fee for the secondary and at least.
We have it only for just the expansion of the secondary that we have, um, and, uh.
I was just wondering if there was any.
If that's just, this is what we've done, pass or just start marrying that.
I didn't, I didn't know if there was any, um, heads up to the public in those areas that that's going to be happening other than just to let, cause they, the, the few that, um, came to me just said that they received a letter in the mail stating that it was mandatory, but it was kind of out of the blue for them. So I didn't, maybe, I don't, I don't know if it'd be.
It's a mandatory fee if they connect to it, right?
If they connect.
Yeah. Oh, if they connect?
But at this point.
I thought it looked, it looked to me as if it was a mandatory, whether they connected or not.
Or, or put in a meter, but if they have a meter, they have to pay for that, the connection. Otherwise, they won't be able to have access to.
Yeah. When, when they put it on my street, we had to pay five hundred dollars if we wanted to use it. So as soon as we decided we want to hook into it, we had to pay. At least that's how I remember.
That's what I thought it was, but as I read the letter, it almost seemed like it was whether they.
And, and we'll take it so that it's either five hundred upfront or divided over a year, uh, or ten months, I think.
But is it Matt? Do they ha- do they have to participate?
I don't think they, we've got the, all through your letters, the letter. I think we, back in the day, we discussed that, that they weren't gonna do that in there because of how the prices have gone up on the secondary waters so much. And there wasn't a lot of need down there that.
We, we were on the council together when that happened and I, I want to say we did have a mandatory.
I think we.
Purchase.
Same letter that had been sent out.
As we extended.
At a lot of money that didn't, and, and we're definitely the same letter time. That's where we got the draft of the letter.
I guess I only, my only concern is that when we put that in to let them know that, that that line's going in and, you know, maybe even have some public, I don't know. I don't know.
Most of it was in because we had, um, the one in Karma and we just extended the connect, but Karma has been installed. Um, it just hadn't been connected to the main line, but it, they have all of those in there, um, in the front. It's all been installed a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
I can almost find it, you know, I guess Karma Avenue. Um, but this one was just, it's a little that close, we just connect them on. But, uh.
I think it's good. I just.
We can work with anybody that's concerned.
I, I think it was more of a, I think just, um, maybe if we could have had a meeting or something like that to educate them as that project went, moved forward and said, this is what you can expect type of thing. I, I, and then we could have got their, and, and their questions and their comments and things like that.
And we'll reach out. If you, if, if there's anybody that's concerned, let me know.
Just a few? There was only one or two that.
And we'll work it out. I mean, it's, we're gonna work out with what we.
Okay. I'll let them know that. Cause I, I'm just thinking of the, the, the ones that are less well-to-do, the, the, our fixed budgets and those types of things. That might be a
But if we will work with.
Hard pill to swallow.
Yeah, we'll work with them. If the letter says it's mandatory, we'll work with them and figure out a way that has to help them uh, to either get on or if they can't, then we'll work it out.
Yeah.
So there's a small fee, um, at that point, but.
Well, it's sma- it's small for some, in comparison to some, some people that.
Small that, for us to collect.
Sure, I see what you're saying. Okay.
For a collection site, it's not, it's not a huge revenue generating on the city side. We'll work with them so that we can do it that way. So.
Okay, sorry.
No, um, and then, you know, that's just construction projects. It's, uh, at that time, we have several different ones. Um, we have had some questions on different spots. Uh, we are aware that we're in a phase process. Um, we've done sort of a large phase, uh, last year and the year before. It's another phase. We have, uh, even we're planning our third phase and getting ready for, for that. Um, and it will include, um, some of the elements that are, are back. But as we've, we're working forward, we are making progress. It just, it just takes its time. We get to every one. So that's for patience as we get there. So.
Great. Thank you.
So anyway, we'll work with them if they, if there's anyone concerned, just send them or, or make sure.
Sounds good. Any.
But that's.
Anything else?
So there you go.
Okay. Uh, depending on discussion, I'm chapter by chapter detail. We've been doing some of that.
We don't have a specific one. Uh, we're still working on the second page, second set of tile seventeen, take, uh, back to.
Planning zone.
Planning zone.
Okay. Uh, any need for a closed session?
Ultimately.
Great. Uh, any other further discussion? I think we ought to stay here another half hour at least. Or we can motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Councilman Labor. Second by Councilman Waite and Baird. And I'll, I'll in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That's in your neck of the woods, isn't it Rebecca? Three hundred north?